It's a great message. That's the number one thing is that that's what people always keep remarking is it is so upbeat and it's, you know, it's easy to just feel the well-being and the joy, which is what, you know, they want to bring to everybody. I'm just really happy it's turned out really well.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Today is Tuesday, September 26, 2023. It is 6:00 PM and we are in city chambers. I call the City Commission regular meeting to order. Commissioners present are Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Stokes, myself, Mayor Langdon, Vice Mayor White, and Commissioner Emmerich. There is a quorum for this meeting. Also present are City Attorney Fletcher, Deputy City Attorney Golin, City Clerk Faust, Recording Secretary Powell, Deputy Police Chief Morales, and Fire Chief Titus. Mr. Carmine Miranda, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So.
It's a jump ball for that. We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as presented, made by Commissioner Emmerich, seconded by Commissioner Stokes. Please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Moving on to public comment. For those willing to give public comment, pass your card into the officer. She'll give it to City Clerk. Each public commenter will have three minutes. This commission does not typically answer questions from the dais, but if a speaker comes up with a question, I may instruct staff to have, you know, someone connect with you before you leave the room tonight. Other than that, I respectfully ask that anyone speaking be civil, no swearing, you know, all the good things your mother taught you before you went off to first grade. So, and for those in the audience, it's so important that we be quiet when we're in chambers. When it's noisy, it makes it very difficult for us to do good work up here. But even more importantly, we have folks who watch this meeting from home. We also record this meeting and make it available on YouTube so people can watch it later when they have more time. And when there's noise in chambers, it really disrupts their audio. So I respectfully ask that you maintain quiet during the proceedings and be considerate of those who might be watching from home or who might watch it later. I know there'll be times when you will want to voice your approval or displeasure of something that's going on, you know, rather than vocalizing that a thumb up or a thumb down, if you want us to know how you're feeling, will be just as effective. Okay, with that, City Clerk, do we have online public comment?
Yes, we have voicemails first.
Okay, great.
Hi, my name is Jamie Buchanan-Carter. Phone number is 941-451-9712. Calling in regards to the meeting, current date, September 26th, regarding the rezoning of the estates. Just wanted to be on record, letting you know that I am vehemently opposed to any rezoning out in the estates, and I'd like that to be a part of public record. Thank you.
Hi, this is Lisa Buchanan. I live in Northport, and the meeting is for today, and I just want it to be a matter of record, since I can't attend the meeting tonight, that I am 100% opposed to the rezoning in the estates. And the number here is 317-402-7109. Again, I am 100% opposed to what the City Commission and what is going on in Northport as far as the Northport Estates and the rezoning that is being put up. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Julie Gage, 941-468-0164. The meeting is, I believe, tonight. I don't know what today's date is, but anyways, tonight at 6:00. It's in reference to the Toledo Blade Corridor Industrial Park, the end of Toledo Blade, and the rezoning of the area. We're against it and do not want an industrial park out in the estate area there. All right, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is David Barnes. It is September 26th, about 3:30 PM. Calling to say that I am opposed to ordinance 2023-25. Where is this flood zone? Where's all the water gonna go? What about flooding? About the wildlife you plan on relocating? The big old factory there? How about this border wildlife preserve? I don't understand how a factory could go right in the middle wildlife area. Doesn't seem right. Opposed to that as well. I don't know what ordinance that is, but opposed to.
Hi, my name is Patty Connors, and I'm a homeowner in Northport Estates. Phone is 941-286-7623. The meeting, September 26th at 6:00 PM. I oppose ordinance 2023-25. It's been stated that the point of bringing industrial business to Northport was to create jobs. However, if we bring a new community of 800 or more homes, we'd be adding over 2,000 people in that high-density residential area. The industrial area has been pitched to create 1,500 jobs. Aren't we really putting ourselves in a job deficit because we'd be adding more people than jobs, all while putting a strain on our services? As an estate resident, I purchased my acreage home to get away from the congestion, noise, nuisances, and traffic that exist on the other side of the interstate. I enjoy hearing the birds and owls and seeing all the wildlife on a daily basis. Your proposed changes will have a huge negative impact on all of that. We do not want the changes you have proposed, and it is not a good fit with our agriculturally-oriented way of life. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cole Garaki. Phone number is 941-916-5177. I'm calling in regards to the meeting this evening, September 26th, at 6 o'clock PM. I was just calling to speak about the ordinance 2023-25. Basically, my concern is, I'm a pretty avid outdoorsman who really enjoys the newly acquired Orange Hammock Wildlife Management Area that we now have in that area of Toledo Blade. And I think that the change of land usage in that area, specifically for these high-residency buildings, is just a really bad idea. I think it's really gonna affect the wildlife and their natural movement between the different wildlife management areas that we have there. I really think that the properties out there need to be kept agricultural to preserve that for the wildlife. I'd hate to see another piece of property like that develop such as what we see on Sumter Boulevard, as well as Panacea, just really, really getting out of hand there. We're displacing a lot of the wildlife. I think we're gonna really regret those decisions. I just really like to preserve the integrity of the sensitive lands, environmentally sensitive lands, and keep it agricultural for the purposes of the wildlife. Thank you.
Yes, my name is John Durance. I'm calling in regards to the opposition of ordinance number 2023-25. As a Northport resident, I was impacted by Ian, and it was devastating to see all the agricultural land and everything, plus all the building that's gonna be going on. It's just not right. The flooding that occurs when even normal thunderstorms take place is getting out of control. I don't know if more spraying of invasive weeds needs to be done or what, but building in that area and destroying land from the animals and everything else is, I just don't understand why we have to do it. First, the wetlands, they help filter, a lot of nutrients that come and go, so let's leave those alone. If we could, that'd be great. I don't know if this voicemail's actually gonna mean anything, but I really hope you guys can, you know, try to see it from the resident's side and not destroy any more natural areas that we have.
My name is John. Phone is 754-214-4320. This is for the meeting on September 26th, 2023, at 4:00 PM. This is concerning ordinance 2023-25. Vote no to changing the future land use from ag to industrial and high-density residential, and no to industrial zoning, because an industrial park will paper wetlands, pollute our air and soil. A high-density residential area will only provide a certain number of jobs, but instead put a strain on the already strained services and no tax base since the majority will be renters. This will open the door for more developers and compound the problem. In addition, it doesn't do anything to solve our existing flood zone issues. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vanessa. My number is 954-383-0031, and this is concerning the meeting on Tuesday at 4:00 PM today. It's concerning ordinance 2023-25. No to changing the future land use from ag to industrial and high-density residential, and also no to industrial zoning. If there's an industrial park, it's gonna pave the wetlands, it's gonna pollute the air, it's gonna pollute the soil. We have way too much development happening, as is the high-density residential areas are only gonna provide a certain number of jobs, and instead they're gonna put a strain on everything. The police station, the, you know, basically all the public services that exist. And there's no tax base, since the majority of these are gonna be renters, so who's paying for all this? This is gonna open the door for more developers to continue to compound this problem and flood zone issues, not to mention that there is so much ecological damage that's gonna be done through this. It's right next to Preserve, and it's not like drawing a line and putting a fence up is going to stop the animal interaction, all the wetlands, all the water usage and how it flows through the state. All of that's gonna be affected. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. If you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mahela Shirley, 941-716-7560. I'm calling about the Northport Estates rezon meeting taking place today, September 26th, at 6:00 PM. I've lived in the estate my entire life. It's no secret that Northport has drastically changed from our quaint, quiet, small town that was quote-unquote "Northport for the trees," Alice Way. I can actually remember when Alice Way came into our school at Lowmark Elementary and planted trees and talked about the importance of them in our environment. That's a far cry from her plans now, wanting to tear down every tree south of Toledo Blade for overdevelopment in dollar time. The land you so badly want to develop backs right up to Orange Hammock State Park that provides habitat to many endangered species, and let's not forget the consequences that this development and rezoning would put not only on Orange Hammock State Park, but Myakka State Park and the Carlton Reserve as well. The Northport Estates is the last remaining properties in Northport that has the old Florida feel and what it means to be part of a real community, an agriculture community, a community that looks out for one another and has each other's back, a community that respects and protects our wildlife and gives back to our community in any way we can constantly. Please don't destroy what little bit of nature and peace Northport still has. I challenge you to listen to the people for once.
Hello, I'm Kathy Smeach. My phone number is 941-380-4156. I'm calling about the 9/26/23 Commissioners Meeting at 6:00 PM concerning Agenda Ordinance 2023-25 and 26, the Toledo 320 Project. My husband and I moved to the estate area because we wanted acreage. We also really loved the beauty of the neighborhood and that the homes were not close to each other and that it was an agricultural neighborhood with horses and different livestock here. My concern is this light industry that is being planned at the end of Toledo Blade, it will be across from homes on the other side of the street. Most families will be looking at a factory across the street from the house. What a terrible view from looking at trees and wildlife. It would be a building seven stories high, which will be seen from my backyard over our trees, a definite eyesaw, and cause a lot of traffic noise with whatever this factory building will be doing. Pollution is a big concern for us. It would potentially contaminate our water, and what effects will that have on our ecosystem? The wildlife in the Orange Hammock will be affected by this building. Where would the animals go with the housing project behind the factory and noise from traffic on Toledo Blade? Also, all the extra traffic from the factory and added development of these homes, in and out of Tropicare, will be a nightmare to just get in and out of Tropicare with all the extra traffic. This area would be a total disaster. Home values will change. All the people that hike, horseback ride, and bicycle riders will not be safe from extra vehicles coming and going. Future generations will have no space to appreciate nature. We have to preserve the beauty of this green space for us all. This light industrial project does not fit in our little piece of paradise. We don't want this area to be a city. The magic of this area will be gone forever. We need to preserve our land for the future. It is such a treasured part of Northport. The peace that we have will not be the same.
My name is Mary Lee Green. Phone number 941-232-8238. I'm calling regarding the September 26th meeting at 6:00 PM. This is regarding the rezoning changes. My comments are that at one meeting I attended regarding rezoning changes and warm mineral springs and keeping everything green, the chairman was concerned about gasoline engine cars driving through warm mineral springs and the pollutants it causes and how it would damage the springs and the wildlife. And then now, they're trying to rezone Toledo Blade to allow industrial rezoning, light industrial, or high-density housing, high-density residential, and what is this gonna do but pollute our water and our air by allowing factories to be built along Toledo Blade? I am not in favor of these rezoning changes. I'm not in favor of ordinance 2023 through 2025 or 26 or the Toledo 320 Project. I want to know what happened to this, so much for going green in Northport. Please leave the agricultural property alone. Thank you for your time.
My name is William Dugan. My phone number is 248-229-0613. I live at 6686 Ramier Street in Northport. My message is for Agenda numbers 2023-25 and 2023-26, for the meeting on September 26th at 6:00 PM. I'm a Vietnam combat veteran from 1967 and '08, and now wonder about the freedoms and principles we fought for. I address you today because of the values, legacy, and importance of our forefathers before us that set aside money and greed and cared about future land use like the Walton and Carlton Reserves. Developers and politicians today only look at the almighty dollar and forget about wildlife, native plants, peace, and tranquility. Our forefathers who dedicated this land for agriculture and a place for wildlife and freedom will turn over in their graves if a light industrial pollution complex is built at the front door of these properties. I attended the developers' meeting, who couldn't even tell us what light industrial was slated for the project, and now I'm hearing this is funded by China. I don't understand how anyone with an ounce of common sense can actually believe this is the right fit for this area in Northport. We are stewards of our land and entrusted with the responsibility of protecting and safeguarding it for future generations. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, this is Andy Smeach. My phone number is 941-380-1245. Calling about the 9/26/23 Commissioner Meeting at 6:00 PM concerning Agenda Ordinance 2023-25 and 26, the Toledo Blade 320 Project. I do not think this is a good fit for this area. Why would you put an industrial center in the middle of a preserved land bordered by private acreage home and the agricultural estates? My home is one block in from Toledo Blade, and the proposed project will be visible from my backyard. Besides the eyesore, where is the rainwater going to go, which now flows through this property to drain the Carlton and Orange Hammock Preserve? It already floods here now. What about the noise? What about the traffic? What about the light pollution and pollution in general? Where are the animals going to go? Why would anyone want industrial in their front or backyard? Why can't they put the industrial on the other side of the project instead of in our face? Why is the traffic into the project going past the homes on Toledo Blade, and they are adding a road bordering the Carlton Reserve, protected land? How will the animals be protected from traffic? How will the watershed get past the proposed road? Where is the common sense on this? It does not fit. Thank you.
I'm Lorraine K. My phone number is 941-429-5621. I am calling for the meeting that is happening tonight, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM, about the rezoning for industrialization. I live in Northport's agricultural section. I'm appalled that 55 acres in this section is trying to be rezoned for the sole purpose of industrialization, especially since this property borders a preserve and the left-hand side of the street has established homes on it. 55 acres of wildlife homes and wetlands will be destroyed, who will noise, pollution, and traffic in an area that residents would like to keep rural? I totally oppose this rezoning and industrialization of 55 acres.
Hello, my name is S P., and I oppose ordinance 2023-25. Houston Homes wants us to rezone our current agricultural land and wetlands that are critical to the area's drinking water supply and flood control, which, considering we're still dealing with the aftermath of a very bad hurricane, I think is pretty important. Replacing it with 55 acres of industrial warehousing, which is the equivalent to six Braves stadiums and entirely unnecessary, with an additional 200-plus acres of high-density housing and all the traffic that involves. Northport has implemented a natural resource division to protect our green space from development, yet we continue to destroy and pave over our environmentally sensitive lands, which also contain a wide array of imperiled, rare, and pretty common wildlife. They're gonna have no place to go if we pave over this. It's time to promote protecting our agricultural land versus prioritizing progress, so no to rezoning, and thank you.
Jasmine Bowman. I oppose to ordinance 25-26 or Toledo Blade 320, the rezoning of agricultural land near the estates for apartments and industrial development. These proposals are out of line with the character of the agricultural estate's neighborhood and the desires of the residents. This land is in a flood zone and includes wetlands, so when we have another flood, all that water has to go somewhere, likely into surrounding neighborhoods, as Hurricane Ian already showed us just a year ago. Have we learned nothing? The swamp is not intended to support such intense developments. Plan for the future is more sustainable ways, and reject the high density and low common sense of Toledo Blade 320. Jennifer Anderson. I oppose both Agenda 1 and 2, changing the zoning 1,000% from agricultural to industrial and high residential, and from no zone to industrial. This is a horrible idea, and you need to leave the Northport Estates alone. Jason Bramlett. I oppose rezoning of Bannock Circle area. Many residents in here own multiple lots and planned on our families that we're raising to be able to build one day beside us. You are trying to take that away. We put our entire future and savings here to have our own little slice of Northport. Mayor, it's not that simple just to sell and move somewhere else. We can't buy or rebuild what we have for the price we have in our land and home in this economy. The city has all these activity centers that were meant for future use and is not full or planned yet. Planners need to plan those efficiently instead of trying to grab residential area land and homes. The commissioners aren't even listening to the people's needs or wants. We don't need more storage units, car washes, or mattress stores. Turn the activity centers into actual activities like places for people of all ages can visit and eat at. Example, trails, parks, skating rink, theater, pup Example, trails, parks, skating rink, theater, pup pup, golf, museums, aquarium, amphitheater, or a shopping mall. What about nice restaurants like Texas Roadhouse or other fine establishments? Northport is very beautiful, so make it a place to be and enjoy instead of an industrial town. The city needs to focus on road traffic issues, water drainage issues, and many other things. Quit telling people what they can and can't do with their hard-earned money and land. Jennifer Bramlett. I oppose the rezoning of Bannock Circle area of Northport from residential to MX2. This is a growing residential community with lots of families. The majority homeowners own multiple lots, so it may look like there are just empty lots, but we own them. Many own an acre or more. It does not make sense to turn this area commercial with the types of businesses that you want to allow with families, many with small children right next door. You could use Yorkshire. That road connects Northport to Fort Charlotte and would be more suited for those businesses. We have been told by the mayor and some planners to just sell and build elsewhere. We have invested all of our savings into this home and a place for our family. This will be our forever home. In this economy, we would not be able to build the same house for the same price with the land that we have here, and we should not have to try to start over for the city to have a cute little downtown shopping area. Use the land that you have in Activity Center that is planned in our area. There is plenty of land in that Activity Center area without land grabbing from current residential neighborhoods. Gretchen Finewood. Every single house in the estate's area relies on well. If there is any contamination that happens from industry flooding, et cetera, everyone's water source will be compromised. The state's area was built and planned for people who want to be away from the urban sprawl. Adding industry and commerce defeats the purpose. They are zoned as three-acre lots to allow livestock and a country way of life. What a shame to take away from its residents. It is the only place like this in Northport. The state's has a huge flooding issue. The waters came all the way down to Toledo Blade from Tropicare after Ian. The preserved lands were three to four feet underwater. How will new homes and businesses not be negatively impacted from this? Linda Blake. We bought our dream home in 1998. When we bought our home, I never thought I would see all of our wonderful wildlife be pushed out of the estate. We are animal lovers and respect nature. Living next to the Carlton was a plus, along with our park and our acreage. Northport has a lot of land that can be used for industrial. This does not need to be near a wildlife or agricultural community. Thank you. Alexis O'Malley. Hi, my name is Alexis O'Malley. We live in the estates and moved here from New Jersey two years ago. Myself and family are against the building on Toledo, especially with an industrial area with a factory. Big no. We choose this area because it's quiet with acreage for our children to live the simpler life. We moved here to get away from the city life and pollution. We need to keep the charm in the states for the sake of our children, wildlife, and farm animals. This would do more harm than good. Please take this time to realize how negative it is to build. Think of the children with the traffic. People drive reckless as it is. We do not support this, and neither do our neighbors. Very negative long-term effects. Thank you. Paula Albritton. I oppose changing the future land use from agricultural to industrial and high-density residential. These areas are already suffering from growth and environmental impact. This area is a natural habitat for countless animals, birds, et cetera, deer, turtles, hawks, turkeys, eagles, bobcats, panthers, rabbits, tortoises, and waterfowl such as ducks, sandhell cranes, not to mention a desirable home for horses and donkeys. This area is already going to be inundated with increased traffic once the new hospital on Sumter Boulevard is opened. It is obvious the infrastructure, especially roads and drainage, is not adequate to handle even that. Adding the additional home sites and the industrial sites they propose would exacerbate the already struggling infrastructure and put these natural habitat areas at great risk. Please consider these critical points and listen to the residents that currently live in the area that have already weathered the storms and flooding due to poor planning and design for drainage, which must be addressed before any further development. Thank you. Bobby Shadi. I'd like to congratulate four of the five commissioners who got it right on their evaluation of our city manager. Most of us city supporters and the silent majority agree with their evaluations. City Manager Fletcher has done a fantastic job managing one of the fastest-growing cities in the country, especially through a pandemic and a hurricane. Most of the silent majority and I are sick of hearing the constant negative attacks against our city manager, our commissioners, city staff, et cetera, led by one commissioner and her very vocal small number of supporters. They never have anything positive to say about our city manager or four of the commissioners. This one commissioner's followers have cost taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars in frivolous lawsuits, record requests, and ethics complaints. One of her followers, a former commissioner who quit only two weeks after he was elected, cost taxpayers $94,000 for a special election, is now slamming sitting commissioners except one for spending too much. How ironic. I want to thank Mr. Fletcher and the Fantastic Four for doing a great job. Carrie Pace. Industrial development and activity is undesirable and physiologically distressing. Developers and governmental decision-makers overlook the desires of neighbor and communities, and decisions are made disregarding them, resulting in community resistance. Industrial activity is perceived as neighborhood disorder, which increases psychological distress by continually reminding neighborhood residents that they live in unsafe, unhealthy environments because industrial facilities bring more traffic and noise into a neighborhood than is socially desirable. Residents also believe that industrial facilities degrade the natural beauty of their neighborhoods and prevent the establishment of neighborhood green spaces. Carol Swanson. Ordinance 2023-25, changing the future land use from agricultural to industrial and high-density residential. This proposal goes against the definition of the comprehensive plan requirement, future land use element goal 1. The first goal of future land use element is to properly locate land uses so as to maximize the economic benefit and enjoyment of natural and man-made resources while minimizing the threat to health, safety, and welfare. This land adjoins the Walton Preserve and Orange Hammock, both used by equestrians, hikers, bikers, hunters, and birders. Changing the land uses does not fit in with the current agricultural surrounding land. The health and well-being of local neighbors would be directly impacted by increased traffic, noise, and building. It would displace wildlife and remove protected plants. This land was never meant to be developed in that manner. Future land use element policy 1.2, state's expansion, reclassification, or replacement of land uses shall be compatible and consistent with the future land use map. The future land use map states that the subject parcel is agricultural. Staff findings stated that they felt the change in zoning would be consistent with the surrounding future land uses. The surrounding areas are open land and agricultural. They don't even mention the land west of the proposed land in their findings on the report. Staff say that by reclassing, the subject parcel is future land use, that it would make it more consistent with the surrounding zoning. That is completely false. The current zoning is agricultural with four-acre zoning parcels. That area needs the open land to help control the water during storms. When Ian struck last year, there was a river coming down Toledo Blade. If that land is zoned industrial and developed, the water will have nowhere to go but across Toledo Blade to the current residence and church. This proposal should not be passed. The original future land use of agriculture should stand. Linda McLeod. Please keep this area agricultural only. No high-density, no industrial either. Claire Glass. I oppose any rezoning in the Northport Estates to a high-density residential area. This is an agricultural area, and the residents living in this area would like to keep it that way. It is our last piece of this town where my kids can learn how to raise animals and grow their own food. I am disappointed in Northport for even considering changing our area of the town. They have developed everywhere else. We have no need for large residential communities, gas stations, or grocery stores in this area. Please do not rezone our beautiful neighborhood that deer, turtles, birds, hogs roam freely around. Take a stroll through that area and imagine all the peace gone with stoplights, heavy traffic, stores, and gated communities. It is our last piece of real Florida. Please do not touch it. That's all for online. Mayor?
Thank you, city clerk.
In person, I have Carmine Miranda, followed by Virginia Lewis, and then Jody Vaughn.
Yeah, when city clerk calls your name, please, you could line up here and be ready to give your testimony. We would appreciate it.
Good evening, commissioners, city manager, city staff, residents in attendance, and residents at home. My name is Carmine Miranda, and I live in Activity Center 4 in the Woodlands. I'm a 10-year resident of Northport. I'm one of 86,000 residents. I agree with raising the commercial tax base and bringing skilled jobs to Northport. I, along with my fellow residents, are speaking out against the following. Rezoning non-residential land for high-density residential throughout the city. Disrupting single-family neighborhoods by building high-density residential amongst existing home sites. Tallahassee's land grab called the Live Local Act. The mixed-use residential proposed at Innovation Corridor yielding some 6,000 residential units. There's three developments there for a total of 6,000 residential units. The limited commercial slash non-residential land uses proposed for the Innovation Corridor Business Park. The amount of vehicles that will frequent Toledo Blade and surrounding roadways once the build-out of 6,000 mixed-use residential units is complete at Innovation Corridor, along with 660 multifamily units on Panacea, 375 single-family units on Plantation, as well as Bendison's newly-proposed light warehouse buildings. Also, not knowing what type of light industrial will be amongst the existing and new residences in the Toledo Blade 320 project. I think our city leadership, staff, and planners are doing a good job. We, the residents, feel that we all can do better. City has asked for resident involvement. We are here to share our thoughts and our concerns. I watched the commission workshop yesterday and the discussion about the strategic plan. Economic development and managed growth was the top priority. I also enjoyed the following Yogi-ism that was shared by the workshop facilitator, and I think it really holds true to what's going on. I enjoyed the... I'm sorry. If you don't know where you are going, you might wind up someplace else. The decisions made here today on three quasi-judicial ordinances will have a lasting effect on our city long after the developers, lawyers, construction crews, and many of us residents have gone. Don't we owe it to ourselves and future generations of Northport the opportunity to experience a great place to live, work, and play?
I am here today because of your lack of care for Northport and its residents. I do not feel safe in Northport, and this is why. Number one, destroying habitats and trees. Two, overbuilding during critical global warming. Three, taxes going up from greed. Overpaid city manager, a new resource department that we do not need. Four, changing zones for greed. Five, selling to China, allowing development. Six, you are not transparent enough. Seven, you do not listen to your citizens. Warm mineral springs should be kept old Florida. Eight, spraying toxins around ponds and dishes. Nine, only caring about growth. And 10, not replacing trees after destroying habitats and not replacing animals with habitats. You just...
The city clerk has handed you guys a printout from me. Myself, I'm Jody Vaughn. This is Jeff, my husband. We're actual landowners in this area that is below Price and off of Yorkshire. And it's the area that you have in red circled on both of your handouts. If you'll flip it over on the other side. Good evening. Thank you for hearing all of us tonight. I just wanted to let you know that I represent myself, my husband, and some of the other owners that are in the area. So, we're looking at this area that's being rezoned for light industrial. You heard from Jennifer on the... She called in. She's in this area. So, this is what we're looking at, is this is the area of Activity Area 6, which is around the Yorkshire exit and the rain tree exit. So, I just wanted to say, if you guys could please kindly consider not changing this to light industrial. Light industrial, this area has already 16 homes in it, plus there's others, including ourselves, that are in the planning phases for building our house there. When you change this to light industrial, mixed use, no more single-family homes can go to this area. We have this huge section right here that's Activity Center that's going to be for light commercial, heavy commercial, light industrial. There's a huge Activity Center that we still have not developed. This is already being developed at the expense of the taxpayers that have already established FPL in this system, their houses, their sewer system, their water. If it's light industrial, it's going to end up putting businesses, house businesses could be, car dealerships are allowable, hotels are allowable, sexually-oriented businesses. There's families that are living here that have lots. I don't want to move. I love Northport. We picked here. My husband's originally from Florida. We picked this area. So, I want to know, like, what's going in Activity Center 6 so that this area has to also be rezoned for mixed 1, mixed 2, and industrial? This should be allowable to be stayed for single-family homes. We have a huge area that's not developed north of Yorkshire, north of Price, north of 75. Why are we not utilizing those areas for that future growth for those businesses that supposedly have money? Why are we, as the taxpayers, having to now going to redo all of the roads, put all this transportation through these home divisions so we can support having business next to houses? If the rain tree exit happens, we should be able to have really easy access to this whole area for industrial and commercial businesses. So, I'm pleading with you to please not rezone our area, mixed use, mixed 2, and industrial, and please leave it a single-family home.
Sandy Buon Sol, followed by Michelle Posey, and then Juno Enop.
Good evening. I am speaking on behalf...
If you would state your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sandy Buon Sol. Good evening. I am speaking on behalf of our neighbors in my area. I hope I have all of your attention. All of you determine the fate of all of our homes. Planning and zoning quietly proposed the draft 2 zoning map back in April without one notice to the residents. How many residents in our little area don't even know what you're transpiring to do or pass the mixed use 2? Our homes off East Price include Barcelona, which includes Bannock, Rain, Bartlett, Beeman, Belcher, and Billy Court. Changed quickly from the former proposal with a swipe of a purple coating. I noticed not too many purple areas on the new map, but unfortunately, it was easy to do in our neighborhood with existing homes. Research shows on the web, I couldn't find one resident, single resident residing next to the multi-story building that can be up to 100 feet in mixed use 2. Commissioner Stokes stated in the April meeting, "Our property will go up astronomically." I disagree. I wish you could show us, because I looked and didn't find one single home, much less the value going up astronomically. Will all of you happily buy a single home, much less the value going up astronomically? Will all of you, knowing that there's a multi-story building next to you or in front of you? No. My home will drastically go down in value because nobody wants to live next to these commercial multi-story buildings. Nobody could tell us about our property taxes, whether an increase or decrease with this designation. I could stay, like you said, but it's also suggested that I can move. Okay, you need a commercial base. The Shire is near my neighborhood. My neighbor offered an alternative to place the mixed use 2 near the Shire, but Planning and Zoning Department quickly denied the alternative. Our only hope is you, and I hope you understand that we are residents, we are new owners, we are owners with families. Look at the aerial view of my home with the adjacent lots. Isn't it beautiful? Can you see why I'm devastated that I have to give this up for a commercial building? My neighbors are devastated. Please oppose mixed use 2 in our few streets, our six streets residential. We can find another place.
Good evening, Michelle Posey. Congratulations on uniting Democrats and Republicans alike. Can you even find a constituent who thinks this is a good idea? We're about to see where your loyalty lays, because not 30 minutes of emails and voicemails and a Tuesday night pack house, like we're serving barbecue ribs or something, everybody here thinks this is a sham. And I bet, because I've heard it from some of you, I bet your decision's already made. We're about to find out. There's going to be a reckoning. You say you care about the community. You say you care about the voice of the community. This should be a very short meeting then. Northport's not new to growth. We're an oasis where many people converge who wanted to leave the hustle and bustle of big cities or even the corrupt Democrat blue state they came from. We're home to families, young and old, and in case you weren't familiar with the message from Warm Mineral Springs all the way through today, it hasn't changed at all. Our community is not for sale to the highest bid... Our community is not for sale to the higher bid, highest bidder. We, the community of Northport, do not consent to the paving vestuaries and demolition of agriculture in the name of growth. We do not consent to industrial and high residential land use in a sensitive area reserved for conservation and agriculture. We do not consent to any zoning changes that alter wetlands, historic landmarks, the private property of hard-working families, or alter the charm and serene nature of Northport. It's very simple. You need to get used to one word: no. No to your overdeveloped dwelling units that does nothing for our families here that live and work in Northport. What jobs will be required to afford these multi-hundreds-of-dollar units? And where in Northport do you assume these families will work to be able to afford those units? No to any backdoor deals similar to Warm Mineral Springs conducted outside of the sunshine that destroys the will of the people you serve. No to increased air and water pollution, traffic nightmares, and no to the claim of sustainable development that, let's face it, does nothing to sustain natural habitats and ecosystems. No. Look around. Some people have said this item here on Toledo Blades fits well. That's like looking east and wondering why you can't see the sunset on the west. Turn around. This entire area is agriculture. You cannot do this to these homeowners. You can't do this to your constituents. The developers waste no amount of mon, no, uh, no ceiling of money to come here and represent them. You are supposed to represent us. You represent we, the people. I urge you to be fighters and champions for your constituents. Defend us. Defend us.
People watching cannot hear Ms. Posey speak.
And I want my time back.
Yes, she will get your time back.
You can see the passion in here. You've now essentially messed with people's homes in the shining beacon on a hill known as Northport. I urge you to be fighters, all of you, each one of you. Vice Mayor, you can't even look up at me. I urge you to be a fighter and a champion for our constituents here. Defend us like elected officials are supposed to. Join the community. You could unite us. We're all united in this. Join us in keeping Northport beautiful.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
That was yours in 2024.
Juno Enoch, I live in Northport, um, and I just want to speak against the, making the changes proposed today to facilitate the Toledo 320 project. Um, first, the obvious, even if we agree that the city needs industrial, adding housing, especially high-use residential negates the jobs that industrial could create, at least most of them. Uh, it doesn't seem like prioritizing the residents who currently live here who need jobs. Um, the, there's also the idea that the proposed changes make the property consistent with surrounding zoning, and I believe, um, the zoning of the estates was mentioned to make this argument, but you can see from the current uses in the estates that this is not true because there's currently no industrial uses and, of course, no high-use residential in this area. Um, I'm just concerned that this project will put strain on city resources without prioritizing or considering current residents and the overall quality of life. Uh, people have talked about the ecosystem services that wetlands could provide that we really aren't good at putting a price on, and that's going to be gone. Um, it just really seems like it's not, it's not prioritizing the neighborhoods and the people that you already have, um, over these ones to come, and that seems like a trend that's been going on, and I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, city clerk. Moving on to announcements, item 23 dash 0445, current vacancies and upcoming expirations for advisory boards and committees. City clerk, this, would you read the announcements, please?
Current vacancies for the following boards and committees include our advisory board, audit selection committee, charter review advisory board, citizens tax oversight committee, environmental advisory board, firefighters pension trust fund board of trustees, police officers pension trust fund board of trustees, parks and recreation advisory board, planning and zoning advisory board, veterans park advisory committee, and zoning board of appeals. Sarasota County Advisory Council vacancies, one resident of Northport to serve on the citizen advisory committee, citizens oversight committee for school facility planning. If anyone would like more information, please see the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. Moving on to consent agenda. City manager, have any items been pulled for discussion?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you, city clerk. Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? Then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stokes.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the items on the consent agenda made by Commissioner Stokes and seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. If there's nothing to that, let's vote, please. And that motion passes unanimously, five to zero. Moving on to item five, public hearings. We have a first reading on ordinance number 2023 dash 25. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, um, and I'm looking for a motion to direct the city clerk to read this item by title only.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion on the floor to, to direct city clerk to read this by title only. Our motion maker is Commissioner Stokes, seconded by Commissioner McDowell. And that motion passes five to zero. Go ahead, city clerk.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 25, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, amending the future land use from agricultural estates to industrial for approximately 55.02 acre area and to high-density residential for approximately 262.34 acre area, generally located north of Interstate 75 and east of Toledo Blade Boulevard, amending the city in Northport Comprehensive Plan Chapter Two, Future Land Use Map Two-Dash-Seven, providing for findings, providing for adoption, providing for transmittal of documents, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. And everyone wishing to provide testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your, best of your knowledge to help you guide? Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. To my fellow commissioners, do you have any ex parte communications to report? Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, ma'am, I do. Um, I had an agenda briefing, um, with city manager and staff. My questions focused on the public notice compliance. Um, I sent various emails that I received and responded to. Those were submitted to the city clerk for the record. I held two town halls where citizens had questions. Unfortunately, I had no answers since I didn't have any insight on the project at that time. Um, I did watch the PZAB meeting, um, I think it was September 7th, and I also heard the public comment given outside of testimony today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stokes.
Other than agenda briefing this past week on this matter, nothing else.
Same for me, except for my agenda briefing. No other communications. Vice Mayor.
Yes, just during the agenda briefing, I asked some general questions about future land use maps.
Thank you. Commissioner Emmerich.
Yes, during my agenda briefing, I did ask to see the map of the area, just so I was clarified and make sure that it was in the backup material for the map of the area. And, uh, did talk to a few citizens via telephone, and that was about it. I had no answers for them, but I listened to their concerns.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, city clerk, I believe we have aggrieved parties on this matter?
We have two, Pamela Tokars and Carolyn Price.
So we will move on to presentations. Um, this section of the agenda, each person presenting has 20 minutes to do so. Uh, the order of presentation will be first the applicant, then staff, then the aggrieved parties. So applicant, why don't you get started with your presentation?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Jeffrey Boone of the Boone Law Firm, attorney representing the applicant. I just have a few introductory comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ken Galender, who is, uh, from RWA, who is our planner. We also have our engineer from RWA, Mr. Tim Roan here, as well as Stephen Lung, who is our transportation engineer, and finally Terry Brannon, uh, who is the developer and the representative of the property owner. Um, first of all, with respect to the aggrieved parties, we do not have any objection for tonight's proceeding, but if there's any later, uh, matters that, where things may go, uh, we would reserve our rights to, to object there. I think at least one of the aggrieved parties does not qualify under the current status of law in Florida, uh, to be an adversely affected party, but purposes of tonight, we have no objection. Um, secondly, uh, just want to, uh, say that we have two applications before you that Mr. Galender is going to, uh, present to you. And I want to, uh, emphasize that there's clearly, based on what we've already heard tonight, a great deal of misinformation, um, about what's being proposed. Frankly, uh, we're, we're excited about this proposal. It's bringing, uh, jobs to Northport, and it's in an interstate 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 interchange area, uh, where the city, uh, is expending, uh, substantial amounts of money, as you all know, with funding from the state of Florida to extend utilities, um, for just the, this type, this type of development, and, uh, we can get into more of that later. So at this point, I'd just like to turn it over to Mr. Galender, who will take you through the proposal. Ken?
Thank you. For the record, I'm Ken Galander, as Mr. Boone referenced. I'm a certified planner, uh, and I'm representing Deluxe &amp; Homes. Uh, Jeff, uh, Jeff already went through the project team, so I'll just skip through, but presentation overview for the large-scale conference of planned map amendment, provided a little background and the request, some discussion and analysis, and a conclusion The subject property is a single parcel, just under 320 acres. It's approximately one mile north of the I-75 and Toledo Blade Boulevard intersection. The, okay, just want to make sure.
Sorry to interrupt.
Uh, the existing future land use map designation is agricultural estates. Existing zoning, there is no, uh, city zoning designation, and the existing uses on the property are impacted agricultural and grazing. This provides a visual representation of the subject property. To the south, you can see the Toledo Blade-I-75 interchange, Tropicare Boulevard towards the northern portion, just the beginning of the subject property, and extends to the terminus of Toledo Blade. Comprehensive plan map amendment request, again, the agricultural estates designation to the high-density residential and industrial. The portion, the majority of the portion of the property, 262 acres approximately, is considered towards the high-density residential, uh, future land use designation. The potential maximum density allowed under that future land use designation is 15 dwelling units an acre. As part of our conceptual plan that we've been developing, we're looking at an overall approximate density of approximately 3.4 dwelling units an acre. This would consist of single-family detached homes, townhouse, and multifamily. It's not intended to be strictly multifamily, uh, type residential uses. It's intended to be a mixture of such. The industrial portion is the 55 acres. Under your comprehensive plan, the maximum floor area ratio allowed is a 0.95. That potentially could allow for almost 2.4 million square feet of gross floor area of a industrial, light industrial use. Under our conceptual plan that we're looking towards is a floor ratio of around 0.37, around a maximum of 900,000 square feet. Want to further emphasize, your code and your plan do not allow for heavy industrial in this area. No factories, none of that, such high chemical use or high pollutant, uh, uses in that area. Your code has been designed to, uh, provide for those, uh, nuisance and/or heavily impacted type uses. This is proposed under your future land use designation in the industrial for light manufacturing, assembly, warehousing, and distribution. This provides a visual representation, subject property boundary with the, uh, industrial proposing the light industrial uses of implementing that industrial future land use category to the western portion, and the high-density residential, as stated before, providing for a mixture of residential uses, single-family detached townhouses, and some multifamily. Consistency with your comprehensive plan, just briefly, uh, future land use element, the goal one, policy 1.1, policy 1.2, and the supporting strategy 1.2.1, provides consistency with the surrounding development area based on the Activity Center and the village designations surrounding, uh, the subject property to the south and southeast. Opportunities for the need for non-residential and mix of residential uses in the city of Northport. And this supports the city's strategic economic development plan for the Toledo Blade-I-75 corridor the city has been working towards. Additionally, objective three, policy 3.3 and policy 3.4, the proposed future land use designations will help diversify the economic base, increase the economic tax base, and help meet the goal the city has established of meeting the 18% of non-residential development. Transportation element, goal one, policy 1.1. Regarding the existing conditions of the roadway segments, all roadway segments are operating at acceptable levels of service, with the exception of the Toledo Blade Boulevard south of I-75 ramp to West Price Boulevard. With the proposed future land use designations, all road, all roadway segments are projected to operate still at acceptable levels of service, except for that portion of Toledo Blade south of the I-75 ramp to West Price Boulevard. It has been deemed the project does not cause any roadway deficiencies beyond those anticipated under the existing background conditions without the project. The city, as, uh, many know, is already pursuing the interchange improvements at I-75 and Toledo Blade Boulevard, as well as I-75 and Sumter Boulevard, which is where most of the traffic is, uh, going to be distributed. And the project will be consistent with the Chapter 163-18 of Florida statutes. Regarding conservation coastal zone management element of your comprehensive plan, again, goal one, policy 1.1, requires protective species assessment report. It was conducted by Dex Bender, dated June 2022, and is provided and is available in the public record. As required, the applicant will ensure compliance with state and federal regulations related to any identified rare, endangered, and threatened species and species of special concern prior to the issuance of any development permits. This is a visual representation of what has currently been conceptualized for the project. Again, the western portion, the purple area, is the light industrial. The more colorful portion is the residential, uh, tracts with some multifamily in the orange. I don't know if you can see. I guess I can use my. This would be potentially multifamily. The yellow is townhouse development, and the lighter gold beige is the single-family What is bisecting the property is an existing FPNL easement. With it, within majority of the residential tract is the preservation of any, of hi, the higher-quality wetlands that have been identified as part of the development. So in conclusion, as part of the comprehensive plan amendment petition, with this coordinated development of the much-needed non-residential development the city has been seeking, will contribute to more of a balanced and healthy tax base for the city. It promotes the city's desire to have an interconnected, uh, live-work potential within the community. The intended light industrial development, the careful land design integrating amongst the wetlands will attract business and provide for housing in this area. Intent is to foster economic develop, activity, minimize travel distance, and reduce the cost of public services, and, as was seen before, protecting the natural habitats that exist on the property. The project is, petition is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. We are in full agreement with the staff report and recommendation, action, and motion to the city commission. The petition went before the PZAB. They had a recommendation of approval of this- They had a recommendation of approval of this petition, and our team, applicant respectfully requests the city commission approve the petition on first reading. I thank you for your patience.
Mr. Boone?
All right. Thank you, Ken. Just a few summary comments, commissioners, because we know you've read all the application materials, so you're well aware of what our proposal is. We are here with staff support. We are clearly consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Frankly, there's, the light industrial part of this proposal is consistent with decades of cities, the city's, ever since city had a conference plan, first in the mid-'80s, has been geared towards the interstate areas having this type of development. One thing that I think is really important as well is that, as you can tell from the slide that Ken showed, a vast majority of this property is going to be undeveloped, preserved land, whether it's wetlands or other types of environmentally sensitive. Frankly, compared to most developments of this size, a very small amount of this overall property is actually being developed at all. We have to ask, because of the current status of the city's code, maybe it'll get changed, current status of the city code, if we want to have something other than just single-family homes, we want to have some townhomes, if we want to have some multifamily, some mixture of housing types, which the comp plan speaks to, is something that the city wants, and rightly so, we have to seek the high-density designation for the future land use, because when we come back later and rezone, we have to rezone to the multifamily in order to get to the mixture of housing types. I know that's a little convoluted, but that's essentially where we are. And again, with the floor area ratio of the light industrial part being 0.37, that essentially means that even the 55 acres of industrial, about 2/3 of that property will not have any buildings on it. So finally, just want to emphasize that clearly there's a lot of misinformation out early. It seemed like everybody was reading from a script from the voicemails, so there's been an effort, I think, to organize opposition. People have a right to do that, but you have to see it for what it is. Everybody has a right to their own opinions, but nobody has a right to their own set of facts. So clearly here, there's been a lot of misinformation, which in the community, and I want to close at this point anyway by emphasizing this is light industrial. This is light industrial. This is not factories with smokestacks, with polluted waters being dumped into the environment. This is light industrial, and it's going to bring, we don't know exactly how many jobs, because until you all approve this, then the actual development will come, but it certainly will provide new and expanded jobs for the community. And we, again, believe it's very consistent with the city's comp plan. You all know, but perhaps a lot of the citizens don't know, I guess there was one more thing I wanted to say, you all know, but perhaps a lot of the citizens don't know, that the city has a very detailed development master plan, DMP, process, where things like buffering and setbacks and lighting and all of those things are addressed. That's not for today. That's a separate application that we'll have to file. It'll go through the staff review process, and then it'll come back for a public hearing for the PZAB and you all for approval. So a lot of the issues as far as buffering and those kind of things are for later, and everybody here will have an opportunity to come and be heard during that process as well. So again, commissioners, thank you very much for hearing our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you all for that presentation. Staff, you are up next.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. My name is James White. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Vice Serrato-Helfman. I'm representing staff this evening on this item and the subsequent rezoning application. Before I turn it over to staff, I just wanted the opportunity to offer some introductory comments with respect to this application. Your agenda packet this evening includes evidence for your consideration this evening, which is the staff report, which provides a detailed analysis and findings of staff's determination and recommendation with respect to this application. It also includes backup information related to the notice provisions, the notices, the neighborhood meetings, as well as a survey for you. All of that is the physical evidence in the record for your consideration this evening. We would respectfully request an opportunity to answer any questions that you may have. I don't think we're going to use all of our 20 minutes, but at this time, I'll turn it over to staff, who has a PowerPoint presentation with respect to this application for you this evening.
Good afternoon. Carl Binge, planning and zoning. I have been sworn. Give me just one second, if you don't mind. Okay. So today, we're here to talk about CPAL. Well, first, I would like to start off, that I would like to acknowledge a typo in the staff report on the first page. On page one, the date says September 27, 2023. That is incorrect. Planning and zoning actually received the application 2022, obviously. So with that, I'd like to start with the presentation. This is for CPAL 22247 via ordinance number 2023-25. The overview, the applicant is Kendrick Galender, AICP. Property owner is Deluxeington Northport LLC, and the request is to change the future land use category from agricultural estates to industrial and high-density residential. The PID is 1091001,000, and the property size is plus or minus 318 acres. A brief history, the northeast quadrant of the city was first annexed from Sarasota County in June 2000, and this was done through ordinance number 2020A. So here is an image of the northeast quadrant. Since this map has been created, the commercial square footage for Toledo Village has been increased. However, the entitlements currently of the dwelling units are around 9,000. Dwelling units light industrial is 2,371,200. The office is 1,165,000 square feet. The commercial on here is 1,58936, but as mentioned, that has been increased with 450 motel beds. This is the parcel that's in question. And so this is a large-scale amendment. This is over 50 acres, which will have the first reading of the ordinance, then the ordinance will be transmitted to the state for review, and then there will be a second reading of the ordinance, and then we will transmit the approved ordinance. So highlights, this is, again, plus or minus 318 acres. They want to change the future land use from agricultural estates to industrial and high-density residential. The breakdown is roughly 55 acres for proposed industrial portion, 263.87 acres for the proposed high-density. It's important to remember that there's approximately 126 acres of wetlands. With the wetlands on site, they may not be able to get the permitted 15 dwelling units per acre, and the city cannot serve utilities to the site if the site was zoned completely industrial-like warehouse. Here is a map of the proposed rezoning, or proposed CPA, I apologize. The industrial future land use would provide job creation to an area to serve the city residents and contribute to the overall job creation number. The high-density residential designation will allow a diversity of housing types to the city that the city is lacking, especially on the east side of the city. The diversified housing option is, in close proximity to the light industrial development, will be an attraction for the businesses located in the area, and increasing the amount of commercial industrial tax base does not mean that the city cannot grow a diverse housing supply. So any development on site would require a rezone. However, if the parcel was completely AG-zoned, there could potentially be 74 lots, some or all of which would have agricultural exemptions for property taxes. Compliance with the Florida statutes and comprehensive plan, the petition and ordinance was reviewed and approved by staff for compliance with Florida statutes 163.31843 expedited state review process for adoption of the comprehensive plan amendment. The petition and ordinance was reviewed and approved by staff for compliance with the comprehensive plan, future land use elements goal one, policy 1.2, policy 4.12, and policy 5.5. The petition was reviewed and approved by staff for performance with the comprehensive plan, economic development, policy 1.11, and a full analysis is included in your staff report. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. With that, we are on to the agreed parties. City clerk, is there any particular order you would like to call them in?
Hi, my name's Pam Tokars, and I have been sworn. I got it down. Can you bring up that presentation, please?
You actually have to go over to the...
Oh, wait.
Carolyn Price. Is she here also? Carolyn Price. You may want to get over to the side of the room, too, so that you're ready. Thank you.
She doesn't have to. She's not part of the, this part of the presentation. She has her own spreadsheet she's gonna have. I have just the spreadsheet. I have the presentation.
You can just sort of do your thing. Thank you. Do we have IT working on that?
Yes, he is. The mouse is moving. Yeah. There it is. Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Ready?
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi. This presentation is a result of a lot of hard work from neighbors who care about our city. Even though you mainly see some of the neighbors here today to speak against this project, there have been many others that have been involved. We've been working on this presentation for the last three months, with 47 people attending all or at least three, all three or at least one of those meetings. They are from the adjacent neighborhood and other neighborhoods throughout the city. The map I show you, our estate's area here is the neighborhood. That's the project. So the people, most of the people here are from this neighborhood, and there have been other ones throughout the whole city. So this neighborhood map shows how the agricultural district neighborhood is in a relationship to the proposed project. And for the record, most of the information we've gathered to present to you today has been from the staff report, city comprehensive plan, the ULDC state statute. So most of this information we're presenting is factual, and I don't understand how it could be a misrepresentation. We would like to first know how will this project improve the health, safety, and welfare of our neighborhood. Industrial is not a good fit for the agricultural land to the west, which is the Estates, and the Walton Preserve, which is to the north, and a quarter of the eastern border. There are more than 100 horses that live in the agricultural Estates neighborhood. The noise and safety hazards from the truck traffic will affect the well-being of these horses. Nearby industrial zones are seen as undesirable and can drive down property values of the horse farms. Owners may have invested significantly in their farms and facilities. Adding industrial to the area will cause a loss of rural character. Horse owners likely selected the area due to the pastoral rural nature, which would be disputed by encroaching industrial development. Industrial sites often lack aesthetic appeal with large utilitarian buildings, stockpiles, parking lots, et cetera, causing visual blight. This disrupts the landscape and scenery that agricultural areas aim to provide. The addition of industrial to the area will cause the loss of agricultural character. The noise, traffic, and unsightliness erodes the attendance, ambiance, and livability of the agricultural neighborhood. Residents chose to live in an agricultural zone for its tranquility, safety, aesthetics, and community services. Diminishing this with encroaching industrial activities can greatly reduce residents' quality of life, well-being, and property values. The city should protect its residents. The agricultural area was developed first and zoned accordingly. Changing course to disrupt this in favor of industrial ambitions is not good planning. It could be considered a breach of trust with the residents. And then this one. So this is the Florida State Statute 163.3163. The land in the north of this project, Walton Preserve, is zoned agricultural. How will this project meet this Florida State statute regarding non-agricultural land bordering agricultural land? And we would like to clarify some of the responses from the neighborhood meeting notes that the developer submitted to the planning department. There are around five questions where the responses submitted to the city were different from what we were told at the meeting. I was also in attendance at this meeting. The first question was, why no commercial? Their answer in the neighborhood meeting summary states that there is already a significant amount of commercial planned and in another development. They told us in the meeting that they looked into putting in commercial business, but it would have resulted in more traffic. Well, thank you for that, because that's one of our issues. Their next two questions were, what type of light industrial use is proposed, and what is proposed for the light industrial right now? The neighborhood meeting summary states that for both answers, they don't know for sure what type of industrial it will be, but it would be what the ULDC allows. They told us at the meeting that they have nondisclosures signed, and they were not allowed to tell us who was coming, so they do know what type of industry will be built. The next question was, why can't the light industrial be built towards the back? The neighborhood meeting summary states it would be impractical for the trucks to get back and forth. They told us that it would have to build a bridge over the wetlands, and it would cost too much money. And the last question was, they had mentioned a study indicating the need for light industrial. Well, what about an office park for tech companies? This would be better. Tech-paying jobs pay higher than industrial. The neighborhood meeting summary states that there is a lot of competition for these jobs, and having the appropriate zoning in place to allow for industrial and potentially tech will increase the chances and provide opportunities for companies that the city desires. In the meeting, they told us that Orlando would be building a big tech center. Northport was not close enough to any airports to support tech companies from coming here. We're only 45 minutes away from two major international airports. And when I was working, I had to go to Atlanta for training at a software company. It took about an hour in Atlanta traffic to get to that company's office from the airport. The traffic around Atlanta and Orlando is extremely congested. The traffic from our area airports to 75 is not as congested. And part of the project is building residential homes towards the back of the property, with hopes of some of those workers being able to live there and work in the industrial portion. It would be convenient, as they wouldn't have to travel far. The plan is to develop residential housing with various price points on the homes so that more people could afford them. The multifamily apartments would go for the market rate, and currently, that's approximately $1,800 a month for one bedroom and $2,200 a month for a two-bedroom. Per the Camoyne study, the average pay for industrial jobs in our area is approximately $18 an hour. And during their presentation, they kept mentioning that they will have daycare services on-site for single mothers. For any of those single mothers that work in the industrial portion, they will not be able to afford a two-bedroom apartment on $18 an hour if they happen to have a child of the opposite sex. The other homes will be in the price points of around $400,000 to approximately $600,000 to $800,000 for the townhomes and single families. Upper management would be the only ones who could afford the townhomes or single-family homes, providing their individual or family income was in the range of $175,000 a year or more. If the city truly wants to bring in higher-paying jobs, an office park would be a better complement to the area and bring in those higher-paying jobs. This would be an incentive for those people who have to travel out of town to work to stay and work in town. Some of those businesses that would be a good fit for an office park would be tech companies, engineering firms, accounting firms, and law offices. And I don't understand the need to add more high-density residential to our city's tax base. Adding the 850 to 900 home units will increase the need for city services for those homes. The industrial portion was to help increase the city's commercial tax base. I don't see how adding those homes will help the city reach its 18% goal. And I also contacted our utilities department and asked if our wastewater treatment plant can handle chemical waste. I was told it could only handle human waste, not chemical. I realize that companies must install safeguards to stop any chemicals from going into the wastewater. What happens if their systems to filter out any harmful chemicals is not maintained correctly or breaks down? Currently, our utilities department does not have a system in place yet to contain this. Our wastewater is also used as reclaimed water. Any chemicals in that reclaimed water... Any chemicals in that reclaimed water can be absorbed in our soil. Some of those chemicals are forever chemicals and are never able to be removed from the soil. How does this not leach onto neighborhood properties where reclaimed water is being used? They can say that there will not be that type of industry going in this building, and how do we know when they don't tell us what company is coming? There will be a significant increase in traffic from this project, from the homes in the residential portion, and the employees and trucks for the industrial portion. There is also going to be a large amount of traffic from the other two projects for that area. The preliminary traffic study submitted with this application used a projected percentage increase out to 2028. That projected, projection did not take into consideration the other developments. And the developer told us that there was a long-term plan to widen Toledo Blade north of the 75 interchange and install a traffic light at Toledo and Tropicare. I don't see any capital improvement plan money set aside for this fiscal year 2023 to 2027. The fiscal year 2024 to 2028 budget was not posted to the website as of today, so I couldn't tell if it was in there or not. And the impact fees collected will only cover a certain amount of the money needed for these road improvements. The taxpayers will have to pay for the rest. Plus, there is a transmission line, transmission pole line for FPL that will need to be moved. FPL is not going to pay to move that. The cost of moving that pole line will be passed along to the citizens of North, of citizens of Northport once that portion of Toledo Blade is widened. This project will also increase the amount of traffic going down Tropicare to Sumter because Toledo will be so congested. There are a lot of people who ride their horses from their homes down Toledo Blade to the Walton Preserve. Other people use horse trailers to build their homes in when they ride in the, to bring their horses in when they ride in the preserve. How is this increased traffic along Toledo Blade going to affect those people who use Walton Ranch for trail riding? How will it protect their safety of people who ride bikes along that portion of Toledo Blade? And there are also many other bike clubs that also ride in the general area. This section of Toledo Blade is only a two-lane road. How is it going to handle the weight of the heavy trucks being brought in during the construction phase, and once the industrial building is built? This is a slide of a portion of the wetlands here, and it's hard to tell, but I know that during, from the map of the planners, this area here looks like the wetlands is going to be spared, but where the industrial building is, it will affect some of the wetlands in here. So during the initial meeting with the developer and his attorney, we were specifically told there were no floodplain issues. The Federal Emergency Management Agency and LIDAR map clearly show that most of this project, project is within the floodplain AE, and that's referring to these wetlands. All those wetlands are AE, and the rest of these are all X. And how would this project not increase the flood risk for affected parties and residents on Toledo Blade adjacent to this development? This is another shot of wetlands for the whole entire project. In addition to filling of the wetlands is shown on the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service's National Wetlands Inventory Map. There also has a potential to increase the risk of flooding, as well as potentially affect state and federally listed wildlife and plant species. Destroying wetlands contradicts sustainable planning principles. Cities today should aim to enhance, not degrade, natural ecosystems alongside growth. Wetlands provide recreation like bird watching and educational opportunities that could boast, boost ecotourism. This potential will be lost. This is the developer's plan. This parcel is adjacent to parklands for the Mayaka Island Conservation Corridor to the road, to the north. They are proposing an access entrance road, which will be right here at the end of Toledo Blade. This will be their access road for all of the residential properties, and I believe they told us that the Orange Hammock Ranch access road will be moved to the back there and then continue on down the rest of the property. So this road right here at the top will border the Walton Preserve. Adverse impacts can be expected to listed species such as the Caracara, the Florida Sandhill Crane, and Eastern Indigo Snake along this road. And I'd like to explain the difference between likely and potential as it relates to the threatened species. Likely means that the species is known to occur in this vicinity because there is a documented occurrence which overlaps this area and adjacent areas, which means this area and the areas around it. But the documentation isn't precise enough to indicate which one it is, or there is a documented occurrence in the area and there's a suitable habitat for that species. Potential means that this area lies within the known or predicted range of the species based on expert knowledge and environmental variables. There are likely federally threatened species in the area. The Eastern Indigo Snake and the Woodstork are two of them, and there is likely Little Blue Heron as well. This is a state-threatened species, and there is a potential for the Florida Burrowing Owl, the Florida Sandhill Crane, both of which are state-threatened. The environmental study that was submitted was done during the midday hours over two days in May of 2022 and a few other days in April of 2022. The weather was described as warm and sunny with a light breeze. This was also before our rainy season. The study indicated, and I quote, "Based on the general habitat types identified on-site, there is a potential for a limited number of species listed as endangered, threatened, or species of special concern by the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission or the United States Fish and Wildlife Services to potentially occur on the subject property." These species include gopher tortoises, American alligators, Eastern Indigo Snakes, red-pocketed woodpeckers, audubon's crested caracara, and a variety of wading birds, Sherman's Fox Squirrel, the Florida Bonneted Bat, and a Florida Panther. The bald eagle, which is being delisted by the FWC and FWS, is still protected by other regulations and was therefore included in the survey. The Florida Black Bear, which was delisted in 2012, is still protected by the Florida Black Bear Management Plan and was also included in the survey," end quote. Hunters who use this area have observed actual gopher tortoises and Eastern Indigo Snakes. They have also observed black bear tracks and scat. The report stated that there were no animals observed. They didn't observe any animals because they're not usually out during the midday. So what our question is, what plans are there to reduce impacts to the listed species? And this next point, slide shows, this is their project here. This is a verified eagle's nest, a verified eagle's nest, and two other verified eagle's nests. So there's multiple bald eagles' nests in the area. What effect does this project have on the eagles? The Florida Department of Environmental Protection purchased Orange Hammock Ranch on May 29, 2020 with Florida Forever funds of $19.5 million and a community contribution of $1.5 million raised by the Conservation Foundation of the Gulf Coast. Saving Orange Hammock Ranch was a conservation priority in our region for decades. The 5,777-acre Orange Hammock Ranch holds a trifecta of land conservation benefits, protects drinking water, preserves wildlife habitat, and provides extraordinary public access. The acquisition of Orange Hammock, situated between the RV Griffin Reserve and the Longino Preserve, creates 121,000-acre conservation corridor of environmentally sensitive land between the Peace River, Mayaka River, and Charlotte Harbor. The WMA protects wetlands critical to the area's drinking water supply while conservation habitats for a wide array of imperiled, rare, and common wildlife. What effect will this project have on the wildlife utilizing Orange Hammock Ranch habitat? Will prescribed burns be used as land management be limited by the adjacent homes? Will our drinking water coming from the WMA be contaminated? Stormwater runoff will affect the neighborhoods. You have a big building that will take up a lot of square footage, forcing the water away from it. The parking lot for the industrial portion will be along Toledo Blade. Where is that water going? It'll drain away from the building to the street because that's the only direction it can go. The storm drains can't handle all of it. I realize part of the due diligence is to work with the city regarding this. What guarantee will be given that any solution will work? In Chapter 6 of the Comprehensive Plan, Goal 1, Objective 1, Policy 1.5, the city adopted a level of service of 10 acres of recreation and open space for 1,000 residents to be allocated among three park classifications, the community park, open space, and conservation lands. Will the city still be able to meet this goal with the projected increase of population expected? And I don't know what the number was, I couldn't find it. And we don't have very much land. If they expect it to go to like, what, 250, 300,000? I don't know if that was what it was, but that's the number that I remember. And this, this is just a question. Per Chapter 3, check, excuse me, Chapter 2 of the Comprehensive Plan, Goal 3, Objective 9, and Policy 9.4, 14, it says, "No public water or sewer service shall be provided to the agricultural estates portion of the Glosson/Carlton property. Is this property considered part of the area since the land use is agricultural estates?" Those names, if you look here, there's Carlton and Glosson as past owners of this property. Those names are not part of the ownership history for the properties across the street. And finally, we submitted a records request to the city regarding the developer's plans. One of the items we received back was an email from Mr. Galinder checking on the status of the application. In this email, he mentioned that they are planning on selling to the end user or the developer for the industrial uses. With this, the state just passed the Live Local law allowing low-income housing to be built on industrial zoning. How will we know that the end user will develop this parcel as industrial and not low-income housing? And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Carolyn, are you giving testimony today? Does she also have to come over this side?
Yeah, she doesn't have a question.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good evening. Carolyn Price, I have been sworn. I'm a resident of Northport Estates. My property fronts Toledo Blade directly across the street from the proposed industrial area. In reference to the future land use element, Goal 1, we don't agree with the staff findings. I was changing the future land use from agricultural to industrial and high intensity residential going to complement all of the surrounding properties for this project. They only reference the properties to the south, not to the northeast, south, and west. There are properties to the north and west that this project certainly will not complement. This development does not provide any connectivity with the adjacent properties. The economic benefit of the industrial properties will be negated by the increase of high-density residential being built on other parts of the project. There will be approximately 900 units residential. This will be an increased need for city services by those residents. Staff response does not prove how this project will minimize the threat to health, safety, and welfare to the area. How is it going to protect my safety with the increase in traffic? How will it promote any health benefits? How will it protect my welfare with the increase in lighting and noise from the truck traffic that would be coming in and out of the factory? The fact that the front of the project along Toledo Blade will be parking lot, how will it protect my home from flooding due to the water having no place to go? During Ian, Toledo Blade was a river. The water coming off all of the land to the north was coming down Toledo Blade. In reference to Policy 1.2, we don't agree with staff findings again. Even though the village zoning description allows for up to 20% of the area to be industrial, the project being built to the south has no industrial in it. It's homeowners, homeland only, all the way to 75 and, to lay down Toledo. For Section 124-76 of the Sarasota County Open Use Agricultural Zoning does not allow for industrial uses or high-density residential either. So how does this property satisfy this policy? The staff response is only focused on the property to the south. It does not take in account to the property to the west, which is where my home is. So how does this property satisfy the policy? Staff response is only focused on the property to the south, as I said. It does not take into consideration the properties to the north and to the west. Policy 4.12, we don't agree with staff findings again. They say this future land use change will make it more consistent with the properties to the south. They do not take into consideration the other properties that surround the development on the other sides. It does not meet those standards to be compatible with the agricultural estates and the Walton Preserve and Orange Hammock. Policy 5.5, at the planning and zoning hearing for this project, Lori Barnes stated there is no quadrant plan in place. If there's no plan in place, how does this project meet the land use element 5.5 for this proposal today? And finally, Policy 1.1.1 was the Florida Job Growth Grant only for Activity Center 4. This project is not part of the Activity Center. How can this project satisfy the needs of the grant by following the guidelines listed on it? Back to the goal. I believe the staff did as best as they could of the information they were given. I do not agree with these findings. This factory, and let's be honest and call it what it basically will be, will not have any connectivity with the current neighborhoods. The existing homes were not taken into account with these findings. The existing homes are part of the estates, which is an agricultural residential area. These properties and homes were here when this end of Toledo Blade was not even connected or called Toledo Blade. It was called Choctaw Boulevard, and it was a dead end on both ends of it. The increased traffic from construction vehicles, vehicles from the 900 homes and from the semi-trucks, traffic going in and out of the factory, will never be able to be held, accommodated by, because of the weight of these vehicles and the number of these vehicles. There is also the difficulty in safety of the homeowners who will have entering and leaving their properties. This dead end is not a major connector street as stated in the findings. This factory will not maximize the enjoyment of the natural resources as stated in the findings. It will, in fact, destroy wetlands as they work and pave them over. The developers told us they would pave over two dry stream beds for the road into the residential area. I submit that those stream beds were dry because of drought conditions at the time. Those stream beds funnel water from the ranchland to the north into the wetlands. The increased traffic from this factory will further impact the homes on Tropicare as this road will be used as a cut through, I'm sorry, on Tropicare, as this road will be used as a cut through to avoid the traffic at I-75 and Toledo Blade, using Sumter instead. Lastly, there is no buffering in the world that will negate the effects to the houses on Toledo Blade across from the factory. Policy 4.12, yet again, I disagree with the staff findings. This factory is not cohesive nor compatible fit. It will not promote a desirable neighborhood characteristic, but in fact will destroy the existing neighborhood. They will also have damage effect to the border and Walton Preserve with light pollution, noise pollution, and negative effects to the wildlife and water flow. This factory is huge. It's over 55 acres with 900,000 square feet of building. Where is the runoff from this going? I believe it will run off onto Toledo Blade and flood our homes. The developer is not providing any information on how many jobs will be created and has cited confidentiality as the reason. This lack of transparency will make it impossible to assess how many jobs will be created. The developers will have no control over this, as the owners of the factory will be. They will bring in their own employees as opposed to offering them to our community. Policy 1.2, again, I do not agree with staff findings. The rezoning will not make it more consistent with the surrounding developments. For Section 124-76 of Sarasota County, industrial is not a listed use for open agricultural zoning. Northport Estates is an existing agricultural residential that does not allow for industrial. None of these surrounding developments have industrial. They will be residential, recreational. And so this factory will not be in, in a line with the surrounding homes and the new residential neighborhoods to be built to the south. There's no reason for Toledo Blade 320 Plan could not be residential only. This would flow with the other residential recreational neighborhoods to the south. This would create a beautiful area of homes, recreation, and protected natural habitat. The south side of I-75 and Toledo Blade could be further developed from what it is already, starting with the existence of the buildings. Large open areas already zoned but have not been developed yet, as in the Benderson project areas. Homeownership is the largest investment we make. Please don't destroy the value of our homes with this unnecessary factory.
Thank you, ma'am. At, at this point, I'm sure there are several of us up here who would like to take a break, but I'm going to push through and finish this session. If anyone needs to take a break, go ahead and do so. At this point in the proceedings, each party, the applicant, staff, and aggrieved parties have five minutes each for rebuttal. The order will be applicant, staff, and aggrieved party. So applicant, if you would come back up, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. For the record, again, Jeffrey Boone representing the applicant. I believe under Northport's procedures, this is also the opportunity for cross-examination. Just want to lodge, for the record, an objection to the voicemails that were played earlier. I had, neither I nor anyone else from the applicant has an opportunity to cross-examine those folks who left voicemails. And I think Florida law is very clear that there's a right to cross-examination in quasi-judicial hearings. With that out of the way, I think you've heard, you've clearly heard some of the factual misstatements. The wetlands here are not going to be paved over. In fact, from the exhibit we showed earlier, the vast majority of this property is going to be left alone. That's not factually correct. There has been light industrial already approved for this area. The statements to the fact that there is no industrial approved for this area, that's factually incorrect. Northport Gardens was approved for 2 million something square feet of all sorts of non-residential development, including light industrial. I worked on that back in the late 2000s. I think it got approved. It actually was ready to be approved right before the Great Recession in 2008, or somewhere in the early 2010, 2011, I think it was actually approved. So there's been approved, there's actually been light industrial approved for this area for many, many years. A lot of the issues that you've heard and will hear and are legitimate issues are issues that are addressed during the development master plan stage, buffering, traffic, those types of things. And if the development master plan is not approved for the development that you're hearing about tonight, then no development will occur. Approving this comp plan amendment and the resounding that comes next will not allow any development to occur. There still needs to be a development master plan. I can tell you, as a land use attorney who's been doing this for over 40 years, I think the city of Northport has the most stringent stormwater review of any city or county in this area, and you have no objections from staff as to the stormwater review. Likewise, we're going to also have to get swift mud permits before any development can occur. There's been no objections from staff with respect to, or issues raised by staff with respect to environmental issues. Again, all of the permits, federal, state, local, that have to be obtained, that deal with environmental and endangered species and all of that, all of those permits have to be obtained, or no development can occur here. Those are legitimate issues, but they'll have to be addressed, or no development will What we're proposing today is not development in the middle of Northport Estates. This isn't as if people who live in the estates have this development plunked down in the middle. This is a development across Toledo Blade Boulevard from a few of the houses in the estates that, again, Toledo Blade is going to be a four-lane road at some point in the future. There's even going to be a traffic light, I think, not from this proposal, but another development proposal at Tropicare in Toledo Blade, when the traffic warrants it. What you were shown from the Florida statutes, that's actually, the intent of that wasn't highlighted for you, and I'm familiar with that statute. That statute came about where existing farms, by the way, my aunt and uncle, my mom's sister and brother, had one of the largest pig farms in Florida back in the 60s. So this young man who grew up in a beach town in southwest Florida, in Venice, spent a couple, three weeks every summer on a pig farm. So I know about agriculture. And this law is designed to what was happening mainly in North Florida, was that residential development was encroaching on existing farms, then people started explaining about how they smell bad, you know, and they're noisy because their farmers get up at dawn, you know, and I want to sleep, you know, and that kind of stuff. That's what that law is about. That law actually would say that for the estates to exist, they would have to be, you know, they would have to take into consideration what's going on on the big ranchlands that are to the north. And that actually has no impact on what we're doing here because the county has already taken steps to preserve the true bona fide agricultural use in all, McCarleton Ranch, Longchamp Ranch, Walton Ranch, all those ranchlands. The county took care of that 30 years ago, I can speak to that later, to address any issue from that, any issue from that statute. This property was not subdivided and platted and subdivided, as was the estates, and that's why it was never planned to be like the estates.
You're timed us up. Thank you very much. Staff, five-minute rebuttal.
Elena Ray, Director of Development Services. For the record, I have been sworn. A few points I want to make, we have sort of a tag team, so some of my staff will be making some points after me. First, this is not part of Northport Estates, never has been. This is separate area, and the commission will recall through many public comment, through public hearings and workshops that we've had on other projects in the ULDC, that everyone has stated they knew this wasn't part of the Northport Estates, and they didn't care what happened on the east side of Toledo Blade, as long as we left the estates alone. The commission listened to that. Staff has listened to that. We have left Northport Estates alone. But this area on the east side of Toledo Blade was annexed into the city for the purpose of future development. It was never left, it was never annexed to be agricultural land. Cities do not annex land to be left as agricultural. That does not contribute to the tax base. There have been comments that this was going to be a factory. It was going to be an industrial plant. This is not a factory. It is not an industrial plant. It is essentially the equivalent of the Benderson Development on the south side of 75, which is a very clean development, is it's an attractive development. It has no outside odors or noises or impacts. There are homes that are surrounding it, and that is the type of industrial park that this is proposed for. It is also roughly the same size as that Benderson Development. So as far as impacts, you can look at that to see what the impact would be. The residential that is being proposed does not negate the benefits of industry, of the industrial being proposed, because it is, it's not a zero-sum game. The residential that's being proposed is very limited amount of diversified housing types that is sorely needed as an alternative to the single-family well-inseptic lots that eastern Northport is made up of. There are simply not a lot of alternative housing types and master-planned communities, which this would be, on this side of Northport. And those types of developments impact the city services much less because the developers build the streets, they put in the utilities, they put in the sewer and the water pipes, they put in, they have common areas that are maintained by the neighborhood association. So it's much less impactful to the city from a services standpoint. Almost all of the wetlands on this property would be preserved. 126 acres of the 320 acres that this property is comprised of would be preserved. That's huge. They would have to not only preserve them, they would have to do some restoration on them, and then they would have to maintain them in perpetuity. This is not like an agricultural site where those wetlands could easily be degraded, cut off. Agricultural uses that are allowed by right on the property could degrade the wetlands today. They could cut them off and make them ineffective wetlands by right. This project, if approved, the industrial development on this site would increase the city's industrial land by 43%. That's not insignificant. It has been stated by some of the speakers that we should put all of this development in the activity centers. Most of our activity centers are developed already. They are either developed, or they're entitled for development. And we can't change that without a property owner's permission when it's already entitled for, through DRIs and through zoning actions that have already taken place. We are taking steps to increase those amounts in the undeveloped portions that aren't entitled, but it will never be enough in that, those existing activity centers, to compensate for what the city needs. So this development would take a large step in meeting some of the needs that we have. And the fact that it is in very close proximity to I-75 and this interchange is exactly where it needs to go, and is the purpose for the city spending a significant amount of money to extend the utilities to this site. My colleagues got some additional points.
I have 15 seconds.
So real quick, I just want to address the stormwater. So new development is required to provide pre-development and post-development stormwater calculations, and per the code, they are not allowed to exceed the pre-development calculations. So that's how we can keep the stormwater on-site and not increase the stormwater to neighboring properties. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Tokars, do you have any rebuttal? If you don't, please come up, state your name, and state that you do not have any rebuttal.
My name is Pam Tokars, and I have been sworn. In regards to the wetlands, I can't speak for everyone else, but when I did show that wetland map, I did point out that half the wetlands will be developed for that one section for the industrial, not the whole project. And as far as the light industrial use being in other parts of the development, that one that's closer to Northport Gardens, it is closer to 75, but this light industrial use is going to be across the street from residential homes. And then the fact that the issues we addressed regarding the animals and whatever else that's going to be addressed with the DMP, and that if they can't be addressed, no development can occur. Well, our purpose here is to stop the zoning from going from agricultural, and the correct pronunciation is agricultural estates, as much as I hate using that word, estates, but agricultural, to industrial and high-density residential. That's what we're changing the future land use to. So if it's changed to those two, and then we find out later that no development occurred, we can't go back. So, and then this is, as far as this is not part of the estates, we know it's not part of the estates. As I pointed out in the neighborhood map, we are part of one neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that's going across from us that just happens to be future land use of agricultural estates now. And that Florida state statute, what I was referring to for that is the non-agricultural land. If we change this parcel, it will now, it's already agricultural land, it will go to industrial and high-density residential. What will happen is the Walton Preserve above it is still agricultural. Even though they don't use it for farmland, we don't know what they're going to use it for because it's not our land. So it's still bordering Florida land in that sense. And then as far as the diversity of housing, I think I pointed out, I can't afford to live in a $400,000 town home. But how, it's a price point that is out of reach. For me, affordable housing is not low-income housing, it's starter homes. For people that are just starting out, that don't make that much, that make over, under $100,000 a year, they need to be able to afford a nice home in a nice, safe neighborhood. And it's not fair to them, just because they can't afford it, that they get thrown into a neighborhood that maybe not be unsafe. And that's my rebuttal.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Price, do you have rebuttal?
I do.
And if you could hold for one minute. Commissioner McDowell, I see your light is on.
I'll wait until after she gives her rebuttal, if that's okay, mayor. Thank you.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Again, with all due respect to the staff, they were not in the area of Toledo Blade when it was under, when it was running as a river during Ian. So their findings would not be appropriate as they were not there and witnessed that water runoff. Homeowners will have, will have a choice in the development of whether they want to live next to the industrial plant. Homeowners that are already there, have been there for 20 years, are not being given that choice. Like I said, nobody's going to want to live next to industrial plant if they don't have to. And the value of our property will be virtually zilch because nobody's going to want to buy our property across the street from an industrial plant. The trucks are going to come in and out of that plant on Toledo Blade, and it's going to be facing one of those houses, one of those homeowners, it's going to have the trucks facing them, coming in and out all day and possibly all night long. How is that going to be mitigated? As far as affordable housing, the last time I checked, which was a year ago, because I was going to rent an apartment while I was having some home repair done, the basic one-room apartment that I could find started at $2,000 a month, not 1,800. So if you have single mothers with, need two bedrooms, it's not going to be 1,800. It's going to be well over $2,000 a month. And I don't know how they're going to afford that if they're working in a factory, which we don't know what it's going to be, what type of jobs are going to be offered, what the pay's going to be for those jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, mayor, I am going to ask you to please take a five-minute recess because we cannot leave a quasi-judicial hearing, and we have staff that absolutely cannot leave.
Okay, I hear you. How do my fellow commissioners, we'll take a five-minute break?
Yes.
And then come back. City clerk, will we have to swear everyone back in? Okay, great, thank you. Let's take five minutes. We'll come back at 8:07. Let's take five minutes, we'll come back at 8:07. It's 8:07, we're resuming the meeting. 8:07, please take your seats. Thank you, everyone. Is everyone back? Okay, at this point in the process, I'm calling for public comments. City clerk?
Yes, we have Virginia Lewis, followed by Heidi Schwanier and Jennifer Nicole.
This is a five-minute?
It's a three-minute, ma'am.
Okay. Virginia Lewis, I have been sworn. Okay, something's wrong. We have grown to over 8 billion people, overindulging with food, building, polluting, and greed. There are over 100 billion buildings on Earth. Countries are competing to see who can make the largest and tallest. The richer you get, the more you want. It's been proven over and over again. Seems like things are more intense, more intense storms, fires, droughts, temperatures rising, and it's the human race making this happen. Our CO2 level is 417.06. It's a record high, drastically increasing the last 150 years. Contributes fossil fuel, oil, gas, coal. Buildings are responsible for 40% of the CO2. Even with all our renewable so-called clean energy, we are not lowering the CO2. We are not doing enough. All buildings, pavements, less and less trees, all over the world, we are heating up. When will you, when you allow mass destruction of land, did you include one major factor, which would be global warming? And the United States is one that contributes an awful lot to the CO2, so we're not doing enough. And so, but we're going to build more. Is Walden Park sold out? Are the new apartment buildings sold out? Did you acknowledge the insurance crisis going on? Are you addressing habitat loss? Are you paying attention to homes for sale currently available? And what's the 16 priorities for economic development and growth? Scientists estimate that 50 to 80% of Earth's oxygen comes from the ocean, and we're dumping in that. We have 54 nuclear power plants in the United States. And we have 200,000 tons of it in the ocean, packed in metal drums, which don't seem like it's a good idea since it's salty water. And so we just keep destroying our land, devastating it. We've been through hurricanes, people haven't even recovered, our taxes are going up, and it just, it doesn't feel like a safe city anymore, not one bit. We have China coming in. Yeah, yeah, I'm against China. This is a China subdivision that's going to be built here. And, no, I'm an American. We just lost over 100,000 people from COVID. Thank you, China. No, I don't want them here. We're just, we're overdeveloping. It's just not right. We don't need a resource center. If you would just listen to your advisory boards and the volunteers in the residents, we'll tell you. Care about the animals. Care about the land. It takes hundreds and hundreds of years for these trees to grow. And what's the tipping point? Where, where's the tipping point at? When is it going to be when? That's it, we just heat up and burn away.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Heidi Schwanier, and I have been sworn. I've lived in the North Port Estates for 20 years. Like many of my neighbors, I specifically chose the Estates for its rural, animal-friendly, quiet atmosphere to raise my horses and dogs. Our horses and our animals are part of what makes this community so desirable to live in. We need clean air and a calm environment, not noise, traffic, and activity from industrial zones. While they're telling us that this building is not in our neighborhood, it's in the neighborhood that we have to ride our horses by to get to the trails. To have trucks coming in and out of there while we're trying to ride our horses along this little piece of land to get to the trails does not seem fair. It causes stress to the animals. Additionally, our property values could take a hit. Like everyone else here has said, who wants to buy a house next door to an industrial zone? I don't want to buy a house in front of Disney World. The people that live along Toledo Blade across from this building, it's, they're never going to see the sun again. This building can be so high, it's blocking the eastern sunrise. How is that fair for these people and their, and their animals? I just, I don't know. I think if you approve this, the charm and peacefulness of our rural community may be lost, impacting the appeal of our area for future generations. Thank you.
Hello, Jennifer Nicole. I'm opposed to the large comprehensive plan amendment. The industrial component doesn't fit. It's not compatible with the wildlife preserves and agricultural estates.
Excuse me, ma'am, have you been sworn?
Yes.
Would you raise your hand, please, state your name and that you've been sworn?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Jennifer Nicole, and I've been sworn. So again, I'm opposed to the comprehensive plan amendment. It just doesn't fit. It's not compatible with the wildlife preserves and the agricultural estates. It belongs in the industrial area on the other side of 75, which does not appear to be built out yet. How much high-density housing do we need? If in fact, these are upper-scale properties, like the developer told us, what would motivate them to want a large industrial park at their entrance? The staff report mentions the future land use element policy 1.2. Expansion, reclassification, or replacement of land uses should be compatible with and consistent with the future land use map. They say it's consistent with the surrounding future land uses. It's not consistent with the surrounding zoning, even though village zoning allows 20% industrial. The project built to the south has no industrial in it. And per Section 124-76 of Sarasota County, industrial is not a listed use of open agricultural zoning. Agricultural estate zoning does not allow for industrial. This area across the street from the Estates, it's across the street from the Estates, excuse me, and it would be an industrial island that just doesn't fit. We can't ignore the residents living here and only address the development south of this proposal that's not even been built yet. We can't and should not ignore the people that have lived here for 20 years or more. They matter and must be included. The report also talks about the future land use element policy 4.12, how the city should preserve and promote the desired neighborhood character. Staff finds, once again, we do not even come into play. The entire neighborhood is ignored, or not counted. This proposal will dramatically change the neighborhood character through traffic, noise, environment, landscape. It will degrade the property values, curb appeal. I'm one of the ones who enjoys riding my horse to the Preserve from my home, and I can't imagine not being able to do that safely. It does not meet the standards to be compatible with agricultural estates. Walton Preserve, the Orange Hammock, I don't agree with staff findings. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Susan Ballmer, followed by Kim Peeler and Craig Beal.
I am Susan Ballmer, and I have been sworn.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have just a number of things to say. At the public meeting, in answer to the residents' questions, the developer said that the area that we're talking about would be, have 1,000 residents and provide 2,500 jobs. That's a lot of jobs. Doing what? If you're relying on that industrial area to provide that many jobs, then we're talking about a huge disturbance to our neighborhood. Number two, in March 22, the staff said the current average annual daily traffic shows roughly 2,900 daily trips between Tropicare and I-75 along Toledo Blade Boulevard and 7,700 daily trips onto I-75 North. For the portion of Toledo Blade Boulevard south of I-75, there are 20,000 daily trips. As the portion of, and they included the activity center develops, these daily trips can be expected to significantly increase adding users to the transportation network. What is the negative impact going to be? Toledo Blade at this point is a dead end. Number three, this is a conceptual plan only. What will really be there is extremely questionable. Number four, the vast area of property will not be preserved with light industrial multifamily and single-family homes. How can this be? I take offense to Mr. Boone's comment that our organization means we, the organization that you see here tonight means we are adamantly against the proposal. Number six, the city's plan does not have to intrude on our neighborhood. Toledo Blade dead ends, it cannot handle the traffic, neither can Tropicare. Number seven, Mr. Boone does not live in our area. It does not affect him. It's easy for him to say that this will not be a problem, but it won't be a problem to We, it is important, it does impact our area, which puts it in our neighborhood. We cannot say that this is not our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Kim Peeler, and I have been sworn. This future land use proposal really does not consider the element policy 4.12, where it talks about the city preserving and promoting the neighboring community. As we discuss the rezoning and we hear the presentations, nowhere in the comprehensive plan or in the staff plan does it even touch on the neighborhood to the west, on the actual people who live there. They were left out of the thought process. They were not included. A comprehensive plan can only be comprehensive if it doesn't exclude half of the population that it will affect. Everybody on the west side of this project was not included in these plans. Yeah, for the south and maybe for the east, it's a great fit, but there's a huge population that's not being considered. This project does not preserve the current agricultural lifestyle or the surrounding properties that are on the west side. When we talk about the Walton and the Orange Hammock, both of these are just mentioned in passing when it comes to this proposal, both of which were purchased with funds for environmentally sensitive lands, and these lands have had a lot invested in them. And they don't stop at the borderline. They don't stop at the rectangle. They are important. For just a minute, I want to talk about what does 55 acres of industrial property look like? Ironically, our city center here is also 55 acres and almost the exact same footprint. So if you consider from Sumter Boulevard to the softball field, from the canal to city center, that's 55 acres. Imagine that bulldozed, paved, and having warehouses on it. Now add trucks, noise pollution, light emissions. Mr. Boone brought to our attention that only 2/3 of that is actually going to be industrial buildings. That's still over 37 acres. That's a lot of industrial that I do not want to see brought to our neighborhood. It doesn't, excuse me, it doesn't preserve or promote our neighborhood character, and amending this future land use from its current agricultural status is a mistake that we can't afford to make. Once we agree to rezone this, it then has the potential to change and evolve. Once we say yes, we can't go back. We need to be strategic in what we, we have to be stewards for our area, for the people who live there. My other concern is that we're looking at half a plan, right? We're looking at rezoning the whole thing, but we're not talking about how many homes are going to be there. Will the number of homes outweigh the jobs? Will it put us at a job deficit once it's fully developed? Thank you.
My name is Craig Beal, and I have been sworn. This is a handout that I gave to the city clerk. It's 15 pages, it's a lot of historical things. Tells you how those nine properties right on north of Toledo Blade, when they were built, how long people have lived there. Also, with her help, I was able to get the history on the Choptaw Blade extension. It was done in 1998. It would be prior to 1998, when I bought my property, Carolyn bought hers. You got to her house off of Tropicare. You didn't drive down Toledo Blade. So I've heard comments made about whose neighborhood it is, whatever. Guess what? It's North Florida State's neighborhood. That's the way it was plotted by General Development, and it's probably one of the only good things they ever did. So, on to that. This is the second meeting I've been to, I sat through the P&amp;Z meeting. And I don't want to come back here again until we see an overlay of that 55 acres on a wetlands map. I can tell you the numbers that they've put out, or 38% of wetlands being destroyed. So do the math, 317 acres, 126 acres of wetlands. While they're not built on them all of them, a large part of that 55 acres is right underneath the major wetland on that property. So I want to see the numbers. I don't want to hear about it. They've put stuff up on the screen that clearly illustrates how large the wetlands in there. So I've got a couple of maps for you. I got the survey. We need to know the numbers. Numbers don't lie, just like the flood maps don't lie. So before we go any farther, go to the second meeting, show me the numbers, because it's been sugar-coated by the developer. I don't think anybody here is not knowledgeable about what's going on. I take exception to what Mr. Boone said. We're all very knowledgeable about what's going on. And industrial property has no business out there on that 55 acres. Doesn't serve a purpose for anybody. Can't go to dinner there, can't get gas there, can't do anything there. What is it going to do for the area? I appreciate you looking at this. Please look at all our stuff. Keep Repperson-Vendersen. There's pictures in there. Yep, there's a big buffer, there's a three-foot-high hedge all the way across in front of it. I can hide that building from those people that live on Toledo Blade whatsoever. Anyway, thank you.
Richard Kane, followed by Mary Jude Moffett, and then Linda Riley. Richard Kane, followed by Mary Jude Moffett, and then Linda Riley.
Good evening. I'm Richard Kane, and I have been sworn. I am also a resident out in the Estates, not far from Toledo Blade. My wife has farm animals. We have goats, and we have some dogs. We have been here a number of years, 17 years, and enjoyed the peace, the quiet, solitude, the open space, and our neighbors as well. I also want to lend my voice as opposed to the ordinance of 2023-25 and 2023-26, more particularly the industrial rezon request. I had prepared pages of all kinds of notes that I wouldn't be able to read in three or six minutes, so I'm not even going to try. It just sort of reiterates a lot of what's already been said. I had concerns about drainage. I do take exception to a degree with the, with the staff finding that the site of the rezon for the industrials section would have to mitigate its own surface water, drainage water issues, rainwater. There'll be more than just 900,000 square feet of projected hard surface area. That's the building area. But there's loading docks, driveways, turning areas, sidewalks, fire access, and so on. It's all hard surface paved areas as well. The problem with the drainage area is that there's only one small 12-inch, roughly 12-inch steel conduit under Toledo Blade that is roughly halfway along the length of that proposed area. And that may not be large enough. That would be mitigated with the site plan. But there's no other alternative for water to leave that area except for a large cement culvert under Toledo Blade closer to I-75. The problem with the drainage is that that whole area north of I-75 to that whole northeast quadrant really has no water movement to get past I-75 very well. We've heard about people talking about the flooding on Toledo Blade. Tropicare was flooded to Joe Jeff Street. The whole area there was flooded with rain. That could be considered a 500-year flood and an extraordinary rain event. But Fort Lauderdale had the same rain in a day or two earlier this year as well, unrelated to a hurricane or tropical storm. So there's things that we don't have the infrastructure for. I also believe that it's not, the industrial area is not also a good area for this location. It doesn't match the, and doesn't really buffer well with the Estates area. I don't want to create enemies, but there's a longer-range planning discussion about the Yorkshire area with Charlotte County and developing another interchange down there and locating industrial area there. I think this project should be turned down. If you're further planning, thinking for that project area to sort of localize it all in one spot, it might be a better alternative. Thank you for your reading, and thank you for your time.
My name is Mary Jude Moffett, and I have been sworn. I came before this commission a year ago for the rezon request of property on Toledo Blade, from commercial to mixed-use residential. And in that hearing, I was one of many who asked the commission to keep it commercial, and you agreed. Thank you for that. Northport doesn't need just jobs, but high-paying jobs for our residents to live and work here, as well as improve our tax base. In fact, the same property I just mentioned, southwest of the interchange of I-75 might be a better location for this project, for the light industrial. And now with sewer and water coming in, you should have developers knocking at your door. I'm not in favor of approving this future land use change. Future Land Use Element Goal 1 states, "The first goal of the future land use element is to properly locate land uses so as to maximize the economic benefit and enjoyment of natural and man-made resources while minimizing the threat to health and safety and welfare." The staff report states, excuse me, "The proposed FLU change will complement the adjacent Activity Center and Village designations." How? How will that happen? The adjacent properties have not been built yet. The residents across the road have not been mentioned here. Please tell us how that will complement them from this light industrial section of the proposal. The staff also reported that the subject property is located on Toledo Boulevard, a major collector's street for the city, which will easily accommodate new traffic. This particular part of Toledo Blade will not easily accommodate new traffic. It's not a major collector there. It has not yet expanded to four lanes. How can two-lane, a two-lane road possibly manage the construction and the access for residents living there, current and future, as well as the industrial area? I'm not an engineer, but I don't know how that would be approved. The staff report also states that additionally, the property will be buffered from the adjacent less intense uses across Toledo Blade. We all know that a developer is going to do the minimum, a few trees and some hedges. Not exactly a buffer for the residents living across the road. This might be acceptable south of I-75, where the road is four lanes with a divider. Another reason why this isn't a good idea. The staff report that this reported, "This reclassification has the potential to increase the economic benefit of the property by providing tax revenue, jobs, and other similar benefits to existing and new residents in the area." What are those similar benefits? Similar to existing and new residents? I have no clue. It would be helpful, and more importantly respectful, if staff could somehow recognize and explain the existing resident impact in the report. The oversight of the resident impact is problematic and needs to change. Thank you.
I'm still Linda Riley. Yes, I've still been sworn. And to you, Jeffrey Boone, and all the interested developers that arrived here, at my 70 years, I have watched this happen over and over again. They have to do a job so they can make money, so they can pay their bills. I get it. To a developer, the dentist wants to drill your teeth because he can make money by drilling your teeth. Just in the past, developers have managed to fool in the past. That doesn't mean we're willing to abide by their opinions. They're like opinions. Everybody has one, and you get that. If you can't dazzle them with your intelligence, you definitely tried baffling with your BS tonight. You did a nice job of baffling and dazzling. But gosh, you're already, the developers are already pushing the BS up in Maica City. I was just up there today getting $1,000 worth of hay, okay? Three dairy farmers have already been run out with this type of smoke screening. Is that sad or what? Why are we going to allow it down here? You got 104 square miles, guys. Come on. Use common sense. Developers are in the job of developing to make money. That's what they're in the job of. We lived up in Indiana where they did a great job of that right around our property. It was all farm ground. Oh, yeah, it was great. We watched the chimney fall right off one of the houses. It was so well-developed. We have 104 square miles, like I said. Look at all of them. Quit picking on places that are really not substantial or appropriate for what they're trying to do. Having had three lawyers in my own family, I can see why they are called various names of vicious critters. We, the people of Northport, do not support this application in any which way of changing that zoning of agricultural. No way, shape, or form. You have a prosecutor, and you have a defendant. We make up the city. The people reside in it. If you want to live in Cape Coral, Naples, Sarasota, take your pick. Go live there. But don't bring your stuff here to Northport because we chose to live in Northport because of the way it is agricultural. And it's very small. It's a small-town feel. That's why we chose it. There has been no misinformation given here. There's been opinions. And the opinions like that, everybody probably has one. Well, there's a few we might question. If we choose to live in a very agricultural area, it would appear that the commissioners need to listen to the citizens of Northport. We won't listen, and if you will not answer to our needs who live here, it might be we need to hire our own lawyer. And I don't have a problem. For all you people sitting out here, I would put in money to hire our own lawyer to keep from a commission voting for something that the people of Northport have said, oh, my gosh, like 98%, we don't want. Keep it there, guys. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
That's all, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Thank you, mayor. I'm not sure who would be able to do this, but could you please pull up Exhibit C to the ordinance so that it's on the overhead? Because a lot of my questions have to do with Exhibit C. I think the applicant had it.
You say to the ordinance?
It's, the applicant, I think, had it in his presentation. It was the little map that showed the breakdown of where ILW is and where the residential was. And he called it the more colorful side for the residential and the purple side.
Oh, the concept plan. I don't have. See if I have. Yeah, you might, wait. It's right here. Is that it? Has it changed?
Thank you.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. So before I get into the brunt of my questions, I need to get clarification on how dwelling units per acre is calculated. Is it based on just the 262 acres as the whole parcel? Or is it just the buildable area that is designated as residential?
So caravange planning and zoning, it's the entire parcel.
Entire parcel. Thank you. That's, that's what I thought, but I wanted to make sure. Okay. So based on what I am seeing with this residential, high residential, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I heard incorrectly, the applicant said that they are going to be doing 3.4 dwelling acres, I'm sorry, dwelling units per acre. Is that accurate?
Ken Galander, for the record, yes. Of our concept, and as we're working towards that potential residential development, we're looking at approximately 3.4 dwelling units an acre.
Commissioner McDowell, let me just, let me be clear too. That assumes that you all, the commission, would approve density at that number.
The development master planning.
In other words, when we go through, as you know, when we go through the DNP process, you know, the ultimate density is part of what gets approved by the commission.
Okay. So now that we've established that the high residential calculations for, for density is based on the entire parcel, but high density, as it stands today, would allow 3,900 dwelling units per acre. 15 dwelling units an acre for the entire acre, you're looking at 3,900 dwelling units. I understand what you are saying, sir, that it's going to be about 890 dwelling units. But at the same time, if we approve this, it can go as high as the 3,900 because that's what the code allows.
I'm not sure Commissioner McDowell, somehow, that with...
Can you bring that map back up, please?
Oh, yeah, what happened?
There you go.
Okay. With the substantial amount of land here that will not be disturbed whatsoever, I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know how you put 3,900 units on, on this property with all the wetlands that are being preserved and...
I agree.
And everything else.
My, my point is, is that it could go, it could go as high as 3,900 based on the code and the, and what is allowed of 15 dwelling units per acre for high residential.
If you, if you disregard the land, disregard reality, and just do a mathematical equation, then yes.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
That's what I'm doing.
It's no, has no relation to reality.
Because you can always build up.
Has no relation to reality or this land. No, I think their height limit, I don't, I even think if you build every... If I can answer that question, ma'am, I think even if you built the maximum height on every buildable place here, you still couldn't get 3,900 units. The math adds up to that. I'll give you that. You want to do mathematics, but, but...
I understand.
Okay.
I, I'm just putting it out there because it's going to lead into my next question. Why are you going to high residential instead of low or medium residential, which has a lower number of dwelling units per acre?
Okay, so I know it's been a long time since we started with our presentation. So you, I guess you don't remember what I said during that was that the reason why we're asking for the high-density residential was because under the city's current code, the only way we can have the variety of housing types is to be, is to have a multifamily zoning. And in order to have multifamily zoning, we have to be in the high-density residential. And that's, that's the, that's the sole reason why. And I know, again, it's been a long time since we made our presentation, but that was, that was part of our presentation.
And on this map, the little legend says that there's going to be about 49 acres of residential. And of that 25 acres, almost half is going to be single-family residential. So I, I am concerned about the amount of land that is going to be residential if we approve this comp plan amendment. So now, looking at this again, you see the wetlands. So now my questions are going to hop over to the wetlands. If you look at the purple area, and there are wetlands in that purple area that are not shown on this map. And I'm curious, why are the wetlands not shown in the purple area on this map?
Ken Galander, for the record, the concept of what we are developing, the potential is there for us to impact those wetlands. We have that ability to do that.
Okay.
And through this potential use of that portion of the overall 320 acres, we identified that as being the light industrial use. And we may be able to impact those wetlands that exist underneath there.
And when you say...
So what we see on the residential part, we designed and anticipated a certain hopeful yield of residential units. And to do that, we wanted to ensure that of the wetlands that we know of, let's preserve as much as we can for that residential part.
Okay.
Integrating pathways through those wetlands that the residents could enjoy.
I appreciate that, sir. I'm sorry. I don't mean to cut you off.
Sure.
The mayor's going to tell me I'm out of time, so I... So if you look at the wetland at the far west end of the residential area, and it's like a semicircle?
Yes.
Okay. So what is going to happen to the other half of that circle and the two other wetlands that are down in the southern quadrant? There's two little wetlands in the southern quadrant.
Again, those potentially would be impacted.
Okay, when you say impacted, please describe to me what does that mean? Like mitigated?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could seek the proper mitigation.
So you're filling them in?
But that assumes, again, this all assumes that Southwest Florida Water Management District will issue a permit for that, and the city's review procedure would issue permits for that. So the applicant here is being straightforward enough to say, yes, you know, we could impact some wetlands. But is this, this applicant, this property owner, nor any other property owner can just go out in the middle of, of a piece of property and, and do whatever they want to wetlands without getting the approval of the state of Florida through Swift Mudd and the, and the city of Northport?
A couple of my other questions is if you, how many jobs are you expecting to be created with just the, this, not the rezon, but the, the comp plan change? How many jobs are you expecting?
Elena Ray, Director of Development Services. Since we don't know the end user, it's hard to pin down the specific number of jobs. However, we did look at average job numbers for light industrial-type uses to come up with an average that we could provide you based on square footage. And essentially, the, the number we were falling out with, and this is... with, and this is, this is from industry publications, was about 600 jobs.
Okay. 600 jobs and that's just for ILW? Is that for the entire comp plan change?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you repeat?
The 600 jobs that you just stated, is that just for the ILW or is that for the entire comp plan?
Just for the ILW.
Okay. What about for the rest?
Residential, we don't typically calculate any jobs for, I mean, they do generate jobs because of construction and services that those ongoing homeowners would need.
So is this 600 jobs for ILW? Is that pre-construction, post-construction or combined?
Post-construction.
Post-construction. Now, applicant, in your response at a citizen meeting, you said that there would be approximately 2,500 jobs. How did you arrive at that figure? And I know I'm out of time. I'll yield as soon as I'm done. But I'll need a second now.
The, uh, the information that was given at the neighborhood meeting about the number of jobs, um, so the developer has been in contact with, I mean, the good news is there's actually businesses that want to locate here if the approvals can come through. And there's been a whole lot of, lot of interest and, and Mr. Brandon's talked to a whole bunch of different people. Some of them, um, you know, if you have a, if you have a, a building where the folks who work there, uh, work in computer type stuff, that's fewer employees. If it's more assembling and manufacturing, then it's more jobs. And, and he has talked, he's had interest from and talked with some potential end users, um, that could have as many as 2,500 jobs. Um, my recollection, I was at the neighborhood meeting, my recollection at the neighborhood meeting wasn't that what was stated was there will absolutely be 2,500 jobs, you know, I guarantee it. It was just people wanted to know what could it be? So, you know, when you get asked a question, what could it be? You tend to give numbers on either end of the range. And the high end of the range that was given was 2,500.
Okay. So 600 to 2,500 is a huge disparity in numbers.
It is. It is.
So then why I just, that's okay.
No, you're right. And of course, if nothing gets approved here, it's zero. So you kind of have to, you kind of have to balance that out.
I understand.
Okay. Vice Mayor White.
Yes. Uh, I think most of my questions might be for Director Ray. So, yeah, I'm glad you're sitting right there. You had mentioned that this is not part of the Northport Estates.
That is correct.
And that came up with our UL, one of our ULDC meetings?
It did multiple times. Yes.
Oh, that's when they were contemplating the name change?
Correct.
Is that what it was? Okay. And is that why this particular parcel was not divided into three and five acre?
It is. This, this property was annexed into the city along with the Northport Gardens, Orange Hammock and Toledo Village area, and was annexed in for the purpose of redevelopment, but it was not, um, uh, divided up into the three acre lots because it is not part of that Northport Estate subdivision, which was actually a platted subdivision.
Okay. So, and was this land always intended then to stay ag?
No. No, it was, it was annexed in. In fact, Orange Hammock, the portion of Orange Hammock that is in the city limits was actually annexed into the city to be developed.
Yes, for that Isles of Athena.
Right. Yeah. Prior to it being purchased by the county and then taken over by the state. But this is part of that original annexation.
Oh, that's right. Okay. And, um, so what can the property owner do with, with ag? Just, just the way it's been now? Just?
They can do a lot with, with agricultural uses without any city approval at all. So they need, any bona fide agricultural use allowed by the state, they can do.
Oh, okay. So it has that kind of designation. All right. Um, then you said this would add 43% to our industrial land inventory?
Correct.
Okay. And then, hold on. Are there any industrial type businesses in what is the Northport Estates now? Or aren't there businesses that were grandfathered in?
There are, there's a, a feed supply store. There are other smaller scale businesses in Northport Estates. Anyone that has that agricultural exemption could do any of the state allowed bona fide agricultural use.
But these are, but there's places out there, like there's a mulching that's not, is that an agricultural use? Is that considered or?
It is. Yes.
Okay. And there's, there's a septic tank place out there, right?
Right.
Okay. And that's in, that's actually in the Northport Estates section?
It is. Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I make a lot of notes so that I can't go back and find out what I was going to do. Oh, so the actual, I guess this is for you too, the actual layout, when we start talking about specifics, that's going to, that would be presented in a DMP if this were to be proposed?
That is a DMP. We, we typically, we don't really get into that at this level because we can't do contract zoning or, you know, comprehensive plans aren't contingent on a future site plan. But those would be public hearings through, um, through the Planning and Zoning Board and the commission.
So is it realistic to think that this could be, the land use change can be made and then the DMP is, is not approved as whatever they're going to present?
It could be. Yes. They, they could have to make some significant changes to it.
Okay. And then somebody said, yeah, the wetlands. There was 126 acres of wetlands.
Correct.
Okay. And that's on the entire parcel?
That's the residential portion.
The residential part only? No, I have 320 here. So it's...
320 acres is the entire property?
Parcel. And 126 acres is the wetland.
Wetland. Uh, what do you, is that?
Is that what I got?
All of it. Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, Mayor. That's it for me for now.
Okay. Commissioner Stokes.
Where to begin? First, thank you, everybody, for your input. Believe me, as long as we've sat here, you have been heard. Thank you for coming. Couple of questions. Ms. Ray, I'm going to put you on the spot again. I'm sorry, but...
That's okay. This is my exercise for tonight.
And this is your wheelhouse. Um, just a point of clarification. This, this parcel, I, I know that the Florida Job Growth Infrastructure, uh, grant that Northport received for $1.7 million comes with the caveat that the city produced roughly 1,947 jobs. Um, does this property fall within that corridor, so to speak?
So the, the infrastructure grant was for job infrastructure improvement. It wasn't based on an, on an activity center. It was based on the corridor and the improvements made to it. So if we add, um, if, if those improvements are serving this property and jobs are being created as a result of those improvements, then we can add those jobs to that total.
Right. It contributes. Um, can you speak a little, I mean, this area here, obviously, you know, this is a major interchange at Route 75. And, you know, this is, would typically be the kind of area that would be developed non-residentially, appreciating the fact that we've got environmental land, got Orange Hammock, we've got all of the estates. To reiterate once again, this property is not part of the estates, correct?
Correct. It's not part of the Northports Estate subdivision.
What is its zoning? In other...
It doesn't have a zoning.
Exactly. Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
It was, the zoning was, was left as no designation so that
No designation.
it would be changed at whatever point that the city decided what to do with it or the property owner made a proposal.
With the other, I mean, you know, this commission has had multiple conversations on multiple projects about the value of promoting non-residential growth in our city for the purpose of keeping the tax burden off the backs of our residential property owners. While we appreciate this residential community and people would love to keep it that way, the reality is if your taxes go up two or three times, what they are now might make it difficult for people to stay. So there has to be a balance somewhere. There are, if you could speak a little to the fact strategically, how this fits with the two other major projects that are right adjacent to this, okay? Uh, the gardens as well as Toledo Village, which I know has been renamed.
Correct. So just to give you an idea, commercial development has already been approved immediately adjacent to this industrial, industrially proposed area. So immediately next to it, um, industrial, light industrial has been proposed 230 feet to the south. So 230 feet separates light industrial that has already been approved from this property. The police station is proposed to have new, not just a station, but the new police headquarters for the entire city is proposed almost directly across the street from this development. Our CIP, it is the proposed police headquarters, the property that the commission has authorized the city manager to explore, is directly across the street from the triangle portion of Toledo Village, which is directly next door to this.
Yeah, Toledo.
Right. Directly next door. So it's right across the street from that. Um, the, uh, Toledo Blade right of way is 130 feet. That's large enough for a six lane divided. The CIP, the city CIP already shows it as planned for four lanes divided. It's, we talk about a buffer. That's very large for multi-use paths, landscaping on both sides of the street, a landscape median, in addition to buffers that would be required on this property facing Toledo Blade. Um, the interchange is, FDOT is already working to improve the interchange. So there are a lot of changes happening in this immediate area with the utility expansion, the investment that's happening there, the investment with the interchange, the development that has been approved immediately adjacent to this property and 230 feet to the south of this property that is identical to the use that's being proposed here.
And I just got one more for you and then, um, I will pass this on to one of my fellow commissioners. Um, how does, I mean, this project's 300 and roughly 320 acres. There is the potential, if this were to be approved, of 50 acres of light industrial warehousing, whatever, light industrial. Um, there appears to be, if I, if I captured my numbers right off that chart or that diagram, roughly 50 acres of buildable residential. So, you know, regardless of densities, roughly 50 acres that residential properties will be built on. It's about 26 acres of, of right aways, and I believe the rest is a combination of wetlands, conservation, open space.
Open space. Correct.
You name it.
Correct.
How does that compare typically, that mix, that percentage mix with most of the other type projects we see that are of a mixed juice nature? Would you, would you consider this a good balance, an imbalance favoring residential over non-residential or vice versa?
Probably the closest you would see, to really give you a picture, is, is Panacea with the Benderson development immediately adjacent to Toledo Blade and then all of the residential behind it, all the way to, to 75. Um, of course, this isn't nearly as large as Panacea, but as far as the percentage of preservation, it's probably pretty close. If you drive through Panacea, there's a lot of wetlands that are preserved and a lot of open space. Uh, this would be probably, that's probably a good comparison. I don't know that the numbers work out exactly, but it's, it's probably pretty close from a visual perception.
Okay. And so basically, if we today were to approve this, it would move to the next step, which would allow an actual development plan with a lot more detail of all the issues that many, many people here brought up regarding traffic, regarding the environment, regarding the mix of residential property. All that would come at the next stage, which the city commission would have the right to bless and move forward or kill.
Correct. So that, and then that would include buffers along Toledo Blade. It would, it would include all of those really detailed site planning things. And the, both the Planning and Zoning Board would hear that at a public hearing as well as the commission at any stage in that. It could be revised. It could be killed. It could be, it could be passed. So, um, yes, it would, it would definitely come back before you and that's where we would get into all of the weeds on it.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I had here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Emrich.
Don't go nowhere. No, it, it was mentioned earlier about the, you know, the, um, the mulching area on Joe Jeff, the septic and the feed store. But the last time we had talked, when we were talking about the name change out in the estates, those are non-complying uses, correct?
Some of them are. Um, there are, and I don't have everything in my head amazingly, but, um, there are, I think the septic was non-conforming.
Yeah. And the feed store, we had mentioned, because if they left, they're not coming back.
So agricultural does allow some of those types of commercial uses. We are, in the ULDC, it allows like the feed store to, to stay. Um, but something like the mulch, uh, place would not be able to expand. Um, agriculture, bona fide agricultural uses can be anything from timber harvesting. Um, and we have some property owners up in those unpopulated areas that have asked about harvesting all the timber on their property. So we, we don't have any control over that if they wanted to cut all the trees down, unfortunately.
Right. And I understand that. I just wanted to make sure.
But there are some, yeah, there, there are some businesses up there that are non-conforming and then there are some that are not.
Right. And I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a staple for industry when Commissioner White was asking about that. Because yes, there are businesses out there that exist under certain pretexts.
Right. And, and bearing in mind too, the Florida legislature has passed laws that really restrict our ability to regulate businesses on residential properties. So there are a lot of businesses that now can be considered home-based businesses that wouldn't have been allowed a few years ago.
Right. And we'll visit that when we do the citywide rezoning. I just wanted, since we were on those little areas, I wanted to bring that up for clarification. So, yeah, that's all I had for now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah. Um, I think part of the confusion is currently, because before us is the comp plan amendment for the future land use. Currently, the future land use is agricultural estates. That's what it is in our future land use.
That's an accomplishment. Correct.
It is not a zoning.
It is not.
Because right now, the zoning is no zoning designation.
No zoning designation. Correct.
So it, it is a future land use of agriculture.
That was the designation that it was brought in?
That was given.
Because they were required to bring it in as agriculture and then they would have to up, do it later.
Correct. But right now, the future land use is agriculture estates.
That is, that is true.
With no zone.
Correct.
So now, the applicant is before us to change the comp plan, to change the, um, future land use designation from agriculture estates to industrial, which is, hold on, 16% of the property and high residential, which is about 84% of the property. I, I am having a serious hard time with the residential part of it because every single commissioner up here, every single staff member has been saying, we don't need more residential. And I know that you said earlier that this is a master plan community and there are very few diverse housing options on this end of town. And I immediately went to say, what?
Can I clarify something? Staff doesn't, staff? And I don't think we've said that we don't need any more residential. We don't need any more standard, single family lot residential pre-platted like we have now.
And there's, right. And there's, 50% of what they're planning to do is going to be single-family residential.
Okay. But that is not decided. That can and easily, I can tell you from, to give the applicant a preview, when it, when the application, if this moves forward and it's approved.
We don't have a preview in front of us.
No, you don't. But I can tell you that staff routinely advocates and hammers developers to bring in a more diversified housing type. And we've been pretty successful in some recent applications that you'll see soon in eliminating the single family and converting that to paired villas and townhomes.
So that increases the density, increases the traffic and all of the other stuff. So I'm, I'm going to go back to.
I understand, I understand, yeah.
What I see before me, and that's all I get to use, because this is the testimony and the evidence before me, is that it's going to have 49 acres of residential.
Correct.
And our code allows 15 dwelling units per acre.
Correct.
But when our code changes, it can change, and it probably will change, to 30 dwelling units per acre, which then increases the availability for them to increase the density on that property. The other problem is, we have the Live Local Act. And we are still trying to navigate that Live Local Act. And as the applicant said, all of the ILW is subject to SWIFTMUD once we change this to industrial. And SWIFTMUD, for whatever reason, may deny it, I don't know. This makes this property ripe for the Live Local Act. And there goes everything that we have been trying to do to increase our tax base. And having residential removes every opportunity to increase our tax base. So I, I am having a very hard time understanding how staff can, can recommend this, even though it's going to create approximately 600 jobs in that industrial area. But as the applicant said, it's better than zero jobs. But guess what? Live Local Act may make it zero jobs. So I, I have an area that I'd like to make sure because the comp plan also has an objective three. And it also has a policy 3.3. And objective three says the economic base shall be increased and diversified relative to the city's economic tax base through planning and development activities which attract new businesses and industries, while also encouraging the expansion of existing business and industries as indicated in the element. 3.3 says to promote overall sustainability and tax-based diversification, the city shall pursue a goal of at least 18% non-residential development. How is this, this development? I don't care what's happening to the south or in Toledo Village. How is this development meeting the objective three and policy 3.3?
So earlier.
With the residential. I understand with the industrial, but I'm focusing on the industrial with that question, the residential with that question.
Okay, so if you're, if you're going to apply every single policy in the comprehensive plan to every single development and you're going to apply all of those policies equal to every single development, we will never approve anything because they're going to, they're going to have policies that will outweigh others with certain developments. You cannot, it's not feasible financially, infrastructure-wise, to put industrial development on the back of that property, mainly because you've got so many impediments with wetlands that to carry significant consistent truck traffic to the back portions of those, of that property, the, the infrastructure cost would be huge. You'd have to build up those roads going back into that property. The back of that property is one mile from Toledo Blade. So it, it wouldn't make sense to do industrial back in the interior of that property. Industrial really is more appropriate for right-of-long corridors. So this, the industrial portion of it, remember, I, I said earlier that residential doesn't negate the benefit of the industrial. Okay? Just because you're adding residential, we're not adding residential that's on 10,000, 12,000 acre lots that's on well and septic. That's a big difference. When you're adding paired villas and you're adding townhomes, you are providing benefits. Those types of, of housing also have economically less of an impact to local services dollar-wise. Every, every single-family home uses a certain dollar amount of city services based compared to what they pay. Single-family homes are the biggest user of that. That's the biggest impact. Apartments are less, townhomes are less, paired villas are less. So, so those aren't going to be as much of an impact. The industrial portion of this increases our current industrial, industrial zoned land by 43%. So it does provide a benefit. I mean, I, I don't really know how to answer your question that it is an economic benefit to have this development versus having agricultural development or having development go in as large lot residential. So if this isn't rezoned to what it is now, at some point, it would probably convert to residential, large lot, single-family, which doesn't add anything to our tax base.
So the, I had a really good question I wanted to follow up with and I lost it as I flipped the page. I, the industrial, if you've got the 320 acres and our goal is to, to increase the tax base, why not have the whole thing be industrial? And I think somebody kind of touched on that. I think it was, and I didn't catch what you said.
Well, the cost of infrastructure, to get the amount of water back to that back portion of the property would just likely not be financially feasible. To build the roads that would, that would support the weight of the vehicle loads that would be on those roads would probably not be financially feasible. It's the same reason why you have, Benderson is, is on Toledo Blade and it's not back into the depths of Panacea. They need that quick access to the highway.
One of, I think it was the applicant had said that there's a higher quality wetland. I heard that statement, higher quality wetland. Somebody made that statement, I wrote it down. What, what is a higher quality wetland?
So wetlands can be impacted by various things. They can be impacted by agricultural uses, cattle, all sorts of things runoff. And higher quality wetlands means that those wetlands have been preserved in a better state. They don't have the number of invasive species, invasive vegetation. They have better drainage, better perking, all of those types of things. They may be connected to other wetlands on the property or on adjacent properties. That would be a higher quality wetland. A lower quality would be one that has been cut off from other wetlands around it. Maybe it's been disturbed through agricultural activities. Cattle have been waiting in it for many, many years, those types of things.
Commissioner McDowell, you've exhausted your second ten. You're all set? Okay, great. I'm not seeing any other lights open, so we will move to closing arguments. These again are five minutes each. The order is aggrieved parties first, staff and then applicant. So if the aggrieved parties have any final information or arguments, if you don't, please come up and so-state.
Hi, my name's Pam Tulokars and I have been sworn. Regarding Commissioner McDowell's question about the, the wetland and the industrial portion, I do have a question. During the developer's presentation, they told us, I'm not asking you a question. The developer's presentation, they told us that the road to the industrial would be along where Tropicare is. So if this can't be developed for that wetland because it's the southern part of the property, that means if this is approved and they do go ahead with the industrial, that entrance for the car traffic will now have to be moved further north towards where all the residential homes. And their quotes are all, no industrial in the estates. It's, those businesses are not meeting the ULDC definition of industrial. And then there was industrial that's going in the gardens is not across from, street from homes. It's across the street from vacant lots. So as you can see tonight here, a lot of people that worked very hard during those meetings to bring these ideas and the research together. So it might sound like it was scripted while all those people were at the meetings. And we do realize that all those phone calls that were at the beginning of the, the, the meeting here for general public comment would not go towards this hearing. But everyone's here because they want all their voices heard. So what we're saying is basically, this is not a good fit for the people that live in this agricultural area, even though it might be zoned, no zoning designation, but we want to change that land use because it's going to be built to something, somewhere, somehow. If it has to be built out, we did ask if the industrial could go to the back or what would be more fitting in the neighborhood. If you, we still need the commercial business. I'm not going to argue that. I know we do because I don't want my taxes going up. So office park, if you've got an office park, you can very well hide that and it's not a big industrial building. Because those, the buildings on Benderson are really not that appealing for someone that wants to live in a house that's across the street from those. Because those houses are not at a price point where I want a big industrial across from me. And the last option, and I know it's not very popular because as you guys just stated, it's going to be a lot of money and it won't bring a big tax basis, is an equestrian community. People that lived in there, people with horses have a lot of money. And you could build big million-dollar-plus homes, whatever you want, go wild. And then you could have a community stable for the horses. There's access to the Walton Preserve and they can ride their horses there. So that's all I'm saying. Just listen to what we presented because all the information was researched based off of all the information from the city and the state that we could find and the staff and the presentation from the developer. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Price, do you have, if you would just come up and state your name and for the record that you have nothing to add.
Carolyn Price, I've been sworn. I have nothing at this time.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Moving on to staff. Are we drawing straws down there to see who gets up?
We have nothing further.
Okay, thank you.
In closing again, Jeffrey Boone, representing the applicant. And commissioners, thank you very much for taking, well, it's been now a long time to listen to us, to listen to staff and to listen to your residents. Just to summarize our position that's before you, this is a proposal for light industrial, not heavy industrial, so there won't be any smokestacks. This is at the I-75 interchange area. Will increase the city's industrial base by 43%. This is not placing an industrial, 55 acres of industrial somewhere along price. This is at the interstate interchange. Very appropriate place for this type of development. Within this particular acreage, I know you all have seen a lot of development plans, as have I. This is a significantly large amount of undeveloped, preserved land in this, in this overall development. Nothing can be developed without a development master plan being approved, the DMP. The public has a right to participate in that process, can express their concerns, and nothing can be built without your approval, commissioners of the DMP, where a lot of the issues that were raised tonight will, will be addressed. I can tell you, as you all know, it was our law firm, my dad, who did the work to incorporate the city of Northport in 1959. If this particular piece of property was meant to be part of the estates or meant to be developed just like the estates, it would have been subdivided that way decades ago and it, and it hasn't been. This proposed development is not in the middle of the estates and, and, and I think that's important to understand. You've heard people, in fact, testimony tonight about how Toledo Blade is different south of the interstate because it's four-lane and divided, i.e. how much wider that is and how much separation there is. That's what's going to happen here. I remember when Toledo Blade was four-lane and there were people that were saying, oh, it's never going to be four-lane. Well, it used to be two lanes, now it's four lanes. You all know that too. One of the speakers had it backwards. The .37 FAR means that two-thirds of the land will not, of the 55 acres, will not have buildings on it. This area has been slated for this type of development for a long time. Northport Gardens was approved in the late 2000s, maybe right around 2010, 2011. What Toledo Village, even though now you have a new development proposal, was proposed, was originally approved back in 2007. You've heard the testimony about the state funding, the $1.7 million for job creation. This proposed comp plan amendment moves that forward. I think a really interesting point here is 11, 110,000 acres, that was the number that was given, of preserved land in the eastern part of Sarasota County. Walton Ranch is part of that, Carlton Ranch is part of that, Longino Ranch is part of that. So I was here in the 80s when Sarasota County residents, we taxed, we, we voted to tax ourselves to buy all the development rights off all that land. All of it. And in fact, it goes all the way to the DeSoto County border in the southern part of the county. There are no development rights. So this land could have been part of that purchase of development rights and it wasn't. And it's because it was right proximate to where the interstate interchange was. But that doesn't ignore the fact that we have this phenomenally huge amount of land in this, in our part of the county that will never be developed. I mean, literally from the Miaca River, you start about, you get a little bit south of State Road 72, kind of in the Venice area, maybe north Venice, all the way down through Northport, literally all the way to the Miaca Ri, from the Miaca River all the way to the DeSoto County line, all the development rights have been purchased off the land. Stormwater, you've heard about stormwater and flooding. There are no, staff did not raise any issues of that. And permits will need to be obtained to address that. No staff issues on environmental, the studies we did and were submitted. As far as the wetlands, please keep in mind that if this would be pure agricultural use, there would be major impacts to the wetlands. Those can happen without it. Those can happen under much less of regulatory environment for ag use. And if this land would stay in ag use, there would be no stormwater containment on the land. And you heard about the water runoff that came down Toledo Blade from all of the ag land to the north of it. That would be exactly what this land would end up, would end up doing. There's no ability to, to, to control stormwater if it stays in ag use. It's been said many times, but I think this is really important. This property is not zoned agriculture. It's no zoning district. And, you know, we can talk forever about what's possible, no matter what reality is. I remember one time someone else.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you very much.
But thank you. At this point, I am closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
I'll make a motion, ma'am.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion. I'll read it slowly. But before I do, when I reference city attorney, when I reference the comp plan, goals and objectives and policy, should I read that into the record or is it okay to just abbreviate it and let them add in the words?
Identify what they are.
Identify what they are and then they can put in what the actual words were? Okay. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to deny the petition CPAL 247 via ordinance number 2023-25 because it does not, it, I'm sorry, because it is not consistent with Northport's comp plan, future land use element by failing to meet goal one, objective three and policy 3.3.
We have a motion on the floor to deny this petition. Recording secretary, would you please read it back?
I have it if you want me to read it again.
Do you have it, recording secretary, or would you like it again?
Yes, I, I do. To deny ordinance 2023-25 because it is not consistent with Northport's comprehensive plan, future land use element, failing to meet goal one, objective three and policy 3.3. 3.3.
The only thing I did add that you missed was at the beginning, deny petition CPAL 247 via ordinance and then the rest you got. Thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have an ordinance on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich to deny petition number, and you're going to have to give it to me, recording secretary.
Petition number CPAL-247 via ordinance number 23, 2023-25. Want me to read the rest of it as well?
I think we're clear on that. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote. And that motion fails three to two with myself, Vice Mayor White, and Commissioner Stokes voting no. Do you want to make any comment to that?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Hold. Vice Mayor, do you want to make any comment to that?
I, well, this is going on to, this could go on to a second reading, so this, this wouldn't be the final thing.
Well, we're going to need another motion.
Right.
Okay, Commissioner Stokes, if you would like to make a motion.
I will make a motion to continue ordinance number 2023-25 to second reading at a date to be determined.
We have a motion on the floor to continue ordinance number 2023-25 to second reading at a date to be determined. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have motion on the floor to continue to second reading, made by Commissioner Stokes, seconded by Vice Mayor White. If there's nothing more to that.
City Attorney, do we have to include in the motion transmittal of the documents to the state?
It does not, the, the title provides for it being transmitted.
Okay, I just want to make sure that it didn't need to be in the motion.
Let's vote, please. And that motion passes three to two.
I have to speak to my dissension.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I dissented because they could not answer about the, the, goal one is to make sure that the entire project is economically beneficial to our city, that it's not threatening environmental degradation. There's requirements to ensure that our goal of reaching 18% is being met. And when you only have 16% of the property being non-residential and the other 84% being residential, with dwelling units density unknown, because right now they're 15, when this gets permitted, it could be 30. With unknowns about swift mud, this would now, if it gets approved at second reading and makes it through the state, this would now be industrial property, which opens it up for the Live Local Act. And then nothing happens on that property. There, this, this is not the right place for this. We have agricultural, I'm sorry, we have conservation land to the north. We have established neighborhood homes to the west. We have conservation land to the east. And we have a huge development of thousands of homes, over 3,000, plus I don't remember the exact number of homes to the south. This, this is not the right place for industrial.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Emmerich. I'm sorry, when you do that, people who are listening in cannot hear the proceeding. So I appreciate you being quiet. Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner McDowell, but with me in the presentation and where we're at right now, there's just way too many variables. There's too many what ifs. I, you know, I've worked with y'all many times, Mr. Boone, and there's always been a plan in front of me that I've been able to look at and say yes or no if I agree with it. Right here, it's just too open ended and the environmental and habitat impacts, you know, we don't know what's going to happen there. It's, it's a big tract of land and it, and it does, I don't believe it complements the neighborhood at all, being out there like that. So it's, we'll, we'll see when it comes back to DMP and see what happens going forward. But, you know, I just wish it wasn't coming back, so, thank you.
We're going to take another five minutes and then come, you haven't, you haven't been very nice to me tonight, so I'll give you 10 minutes. We'll come back at 9:42. It's 9:42, everyone, we're going to resume our meeting. If you could take your seats. We're resuming the meeting, everyone. If you could take your seats. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate it. Okay, we are resuming. Moving on to ordinance number 2023-26. This is a quasi judicial hearing and I'm requesting a motion to direct city clerk to read this item by title only.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Stokes, seconded by Commissioner McDowell to direct the city clerk to read this ordinance by title only. And that motion passes five to zero. City clerk, go ahead, please.
Ordinance number 2023-26, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, rezoning approximately 55.02 acres located east Toledo Blade Boulevard, approximately one mile north of I-75 in section six, township 39 South, range 22, east of Sarasota County, as described in instrument number 2023-042804 in official records of Sarasota County, from no zoning designation district, NZD, classification to industrial light warehousing district, ILW district, classification, amending the official zoning map, providing for findings, providing for filing of approved documents, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Ooh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Can everyone wishing to provide testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge, so help you God. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. It is time for ex parte. Let's start with Commissioner Emmerich.
No others than as stated before in the prior.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing other than what I said in the agenda briefing.
Yes, nothing additional for me, just conversations at my agenda briefing. Commissioner Stokes.
What they said.
Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to go through my list so I don't, make sure I don't forget stuff. I had an agenda briefing with staff. My questions centered around public notice compliance and emails and discussion about the inaccuracy of the documents with the city clerk and city attorney and staff. Agenda briefing, question. I also had citizen emails, which I forwarded to the city clerk, a town hall. There were questions on the rezon and I was only ans, able to answer on the process since I didn't have any information on the project itself. I received some documents from a couple of citizens and I gave a copy to the city clerk. I did listen to the PZAB meeting and then we heard public comment, general public comment this evening that's part of my ex parte.
Thank you, Commissioner. City clerk, are there any aggrieved parties on this matter?
Pamela Tokars and Carolyn Price.
Okay, then let us move on to presentations, 20 minutes each in the order of applicant, staff, and aggrieved parties. Applicant.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Jeffrey Boone, attorney representing the rezoning applicant. Again, same posture as before with respect to the aggrieved parties for purposes of tonight. We have no objection, but we reserve our right for any objection in any later proceedings. I'm going to quickly turn this over to Mr. Glender. Just want to say, and I know you all know this, but to make sure everybody understands- Just want to say, and I know you all know this, but to make sure everybody understands, the rezoning that we have before you tonight is only for the 55-acre industrial. It is not, repeat, it is not for the multifamily, which would mean that approval of the rezoning tonight on first reading for the industrial would have literally no impact at all, one way or the other, on any future rezoning for multifamily. Or, I'm sorry, for the, yeah, for multifamily. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Staff? Oh. Applicant.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Again, Ken Glender, for the record, been sworn in. Can I have the presentation? There we go. Great. So, again, we'll be reiterating some things, but it's necessary for us to clarify and go into some detail as part of this rezoning request. Again, no city zoning designation for this portion of the property, which is the no zoning designation to industrial light warehousing. Again, of our conceptual plan, we're looking at up to 900,000 square feet of not light industrial uses. Clarify, no heavy industrial uses will be consistent with the ILW zoning district of the permitted uses, and adhere to any of the prohibited uses that are specifically identified under your ULDC. This, again, basically provides for the light manufacturing, assembly, warehousing, and distribution of goods. As before, and this provides a visual representation, we're looking at the western portion of the Toledo Blade project. The ILW is the shaded gray area. Again, the remaining portion will be remaining the no zoning designation, and that application is currently under review with staff, and will be coming before you in due time. Briefly, to hit on consistency with the comprehensive plan, we concur with the staff analysis and the GOP's previously outlined in the prior petition. The economic development element is an area I want to specifically hit on within this presentation in the policies 1.1.5, 4.1.1, and 4.1.2. We believe it is appropriate location within the city, based on the annexation that occurred over time, through the implementation of the zoning, or the implementation of the future land use designations that are specifically, previously discussed, and with the surrounding planned developments and the desire of the city for the economic growth opportunities along the corridor, the planned infrastructure improvements that have been identified within the Toledo Blade I-75 corridor, specifically knowing that the ULDC provides for the regulatory direction to ensure compatibility by providing buffering, setbacks, program amount of open space, and other site development, compliance, stormwater management, and environmental regulations will be adhered to during the development master plan process. Consistent with the ULDC, and we concur with staff's analysis, the applicant has provided, within our submittal documents that are on file and in the public record with the city, we find that the proposed rezoning is consistent with those criteria. For the Toledo Blade 320 project, the opportunities and benefits, the general location and the timing our deal for this rapidly growing area of the city, the Toledo Blade I-75 corridor, light industrial uses supporting the city's economic development goals, strengthens and diversifies the city's overall tax base, increasing that non-residential use of adhering to the 18% goal. There will be no well and septic for the development associated with this by utilizing the infrastructure that is being provided and that this applicant will support. Land development design, providing for open and public spaces, environmental preservation, and implementation of the development standards, as I spoke before, buffering, setbacks to ensure the compatibility of the existing and future surrounding uses, and the improvements to the infrastructure and inner development connectivity. Proposal and the petition is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, ULDC. We're in full agreement with the staff report and recommended action and motion of approval to the city commission. PZAB provided a recommendation of approval, and we, again, respectfully request the city commission approve on first reading the proposed rezoning as presented. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The only thing that I want to add, Madam Chair, members of the commission, again, is that the development master plan process, the DMP, there has to be an approved DMP before any development can occur. Approval of the rezoning tonight does not allow tomorrow for someone to go out and start digging and developing, so we have a long way to go here, and the issues that we heard during the comp plan amendment, presuming we'll hear those again, would be those that would be addressed in the DMP process. Thank you.
Staff, you are?
Good evening. Carl Bench, planning and zoning. I have been sworn. All right, so we're here to discuss rezone 22-237 via ordinance 2023-26. Again, an overview, the applicant is Kendrick Galander. Property owner is Deluxington Northport LLC, and the request is a rezoned 55.02 acre portion of the parcel from no zoning designation to industrial light warehouse. Again, for the little brief history, this northeast quadrant of the city was first annexed from Sarasota County in June 2000 via ordinance 2028. Here is the neighboring, the northeast corridor. It is important to remember that the property extends over one mile east of Toledo Boulevard and includes multiple obstacles to light industrial development on the interior and eastern portion of the property. This includes a large FPL easement, significant wetlands, and inconvenient access for truck traffic. Frontage along Toledo Blade provides visibility for storefronts and provides heavy truck access to relieve the impacts to existing wetlands on the property. Preservation of wetlands is preferred to the potential permitted impacts of wetlands through swift mud. So a little highlight, the rezon is requiring for the parcel for any future development. Currently, it's zone, no zoning designation. The rezon is 55.02 acres to industrial light warehouse, that is, they're proposing roughly 900,000 square foot of light industrial uses, infrastructure upgrades to the area, and the area was recently, is where the grant is, and the grant needs jobs. The city was awarded grant to extend the utilities. A condition of that grant is that it must create 1,947 new jobs as a result to the grant project. Earlier was mentioned that there's going to be jobs created, and that was factored through, per the U.S. Energy Information Administration Commercial Building Energy Consumption Survey, and the average job creation for that is similar to the Brandonon Project down Toledo Blade. So with compliance of Florida statutes and comprehensive plan, the petition ordinance was reviewed and approved by staff for compliance with Florida statutes 1660413A, requiring ordinance to change zoning map designations. The petition and ordinance was reviewed and approved by staff for compliance with the comprehensive plan future land use element, goal one, goal four, policy 4.2, and policy 4.13. The petition was reviewed and approved by staff for conformance with the, with comprehensive plan economic development element, objective 1.1, policy 1.11, and policy 1.15. Further analysis is presented in the staff report, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Your staff. Aggrieved parties. If you have no presentation, you can just come up here.
Carolyn Price, I have this one. Go back again to future land use element goal one. We do not agree with the staff findings. How will the addition of industrial zoning benefit the citizen while minimizing the threat to health, safety, and welfare posed by hazards, nuisances, and incompatible land uses, and environmental degradation? How is this project going to satisfy all of that? How is it going to protect my safety with the increase in traffic? I won't be able to get into my driveway if I'm coming north on Toledo Blade, and I have to cross all the traffic coming southbound out of the housing development. How is it going to protect my welfare with the increase in lighting and noise from the truck traffic that's going to be going up and down Toledo Blade? The fact that the front of the project along Toledo Blade is a private lot, a parking lot, how will that protect my home from flooding due to the water having no place to go because of the strange storm drains and backup? If they pave over that land for parking lot and warehouse areas, the water that was funneled through that land into the wetlands will have nowhere else to go but onto Toledo Blade, which already flooded during Ian, which was hopefully not going to happen again anytime soon. Goal number four. We don't agree with the staff findings for future land use element goals four, policies 4.2, and 4.13. This application is for changing the zoning to industrial. The industrial portion should be able to support all of these elements without including the residential portion of the project. The residential portion needs to be removed. The industrial zoning change does not meet any of these goals. It will not provide connectivity to the other neighborhoods, provide safety to children riding bikes, horses, and people who use the area for horseback riding. It will not increase the property values for the homeowner. I live directly across the street from this warehouse, directly across the street. Who's going to buy my house when I want to move? Who? Who's going to buy my house when I need to go to a smaller home when I get older? It will be detrimental to the homeowners and lower the property values. Development element policy 1.1.1 was afforded job growth grant only for activity center four. This project is not part of that activity center. How can this project satisfy the needs of the grant by following the guidelines listed in it? One of the points was made about visible storefront on Toledo Blade. If this is going to be industrial, not business, why do they need to have a storefront on Toledo Blade? They're not selling anything to the public. They're already got customers that are going to bring the product, the product in on semis and then processing it and sending back out. It's not going to be sold to the public there. My question is, we're talking about the jobs that are being provided, and I know that's a big deal because of the grant that they got, and the city wants to provide more jobs. The other two developments that are south of that, of the 320 project, how many jobs are they providing? Are we already at the point where we have met that requirement with those other two developments, and we don't need to meet it any further? I project that this could be developed into estates for people who have horses. That's going to increase the tax base. You're going to have high-level, high-dollar homes that would be built in that area and would be conducive to the surrounding area. People aren't going to be able to drive down Tropicare, I'm sorry, down Toledo Blade to the dead end on their horses with the amount of traffic that's going to be coming in and out of that neighborhood. They're talking about 900 homes. If you figure two cars for every home, you're talking 1,800 cars that are going to be driving up and down this one small section of Toledo Blade, which is a two-lane road, no sidewalks, no streetlights, no gutters, no storm runoff, storm drains, and now you're going to up it to 1,800 vehicles, cars. The vehicles that are going to be going in and out, heavy-duty vehicles going in and out for the land development, and the truck traffic that's going to be coming out, because it's not coming out on Tropicare, they're going to feed that entrance down further on Toledo Blade. Now, you've got those semis coming in and out on that small two-lane road that was serviced for eight residences and the people going to the dead end that go into the Walton Reserve. That's all the traffic that's on that road at this point. Eight residents and the people that are going into the preserve. That section of that property is going to be bordered on the west with residential, my house and my neighbors. The north is a preserve. The east side of it is a preserve. The south of it are going to be two residential neighborhoods. I don't see how industrial area is cohesive and is any way a fit for that area. It's just not. It's like sticking, it's like sticking it out in the middle of the ocean. It has no place there. It doesn't belong there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Tokars?
Hi, my name's Pam Tokars, and I have been sworn. I'm going to address the ULDC requirements that the staff provided, and I'm only going to do a few of them, not all of them, for, A, whether the proposed change would be consistent with the adopted map series and the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. Staff findings report that this rezon is in compliance with multiple objectives and policies found within the city's comprehensive plan. We've presented many other objectives and policies from the comprehensive plan, but this rezon does not meet those objectives. The future land use element goals, one, 1.2, and 4.13, plus this rezon does not meet the requirements because they've added the acreage from the residential side to meet the comp plan goals. For B, the relationship of the proposed change to the existing land use pattern. The rezon is not consistent to the other land use patterns. It's not consistent with AG, which is on two sides. Even though the village zoning allows for up to 20% industrial, it's not going up, it's not 100% industrial like this property would be. And also, since they always refer to the parcels to the south to meet their requirements, they should refer to the parcels to the north and west as well. And for F, whether changed or changing conditions make the passage of the proposed amendment necessary. For staff response, I just don't know how this response answers this question or this requirement. For G, whether the proposed change will adversely influence living conditions in the neighborhood. The staff finds that it complements the development of neighboring properties such as Toledo Village by providing connectivity. The plans submitted show no connectivity to the other properties. They show two access points to the residential property to the east. Staff told us at the PZAB meeting that the neighborhood definition only applied to the parcel. Well, if that's true, why do they keep referencing the other project to the south? That's not, that's a different neighborhood. They never mention the neighborhood to the west or to the property to the north. These areas will be adversely affected. Number H, whether the proposed change will create or excessively increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect public safety. How can they say we'll not have a direct influence on traffic congestion or public safety? And then they go on to say that an in-depth traffic study will be done for the future petitions. They should be done beforehand. The traffic study that they did submit only did the Toledo 320 project. It didn't include the two future projects from the south. And they are aware of what the traffic study already says. For I, whether the proposed change will create a drainage problem. The proposed change shall not, shall meet applicable state standards. The solution to the drainage will have to be extremely better and not equal to what the current drainage currently is. What guarantee do the residents have that it will not remain equal? And J, whether the proposed change will seriously reduce light and air or solar access to adjacent areas. The staff only references the buffer to the south. They don't mention what buffer will go to the west. They already know what type it will be because it's in the ULDC. A 70-foot-tall building is what it could go up to will have an effect on the light on the homes across the street and any solar access. K, whether the proposed change will adversely affect property values in the adjacent areas. Staff does not answer how it will affect property values in the area. They only state that it will promote more positive development. They can't count the residential portion, as those homes will be sold after the industry is built. is built. They need to take into consideration the homes that are already established, not just the homes directly across the street, but the surrounding neighborhood as well. And L, whether the proposed change will be a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent property in accordance with existing regulations. Even though the property to the west has already been developed, it will affect those residents regarding any improvements to their property. There's also one parcel that is vacant. The ability to develop their land will now be affected. And O, whether the change suggested is out of scale and character of the neighborhood. How does the industrial define the neighborhood characteristic of the area? All the surrounding new and established neighborhoods are residential or agricultural with a small amount of commercial to the south. How does industrial fit into this character? They only focus on the other part of the project and not the properties to the west or the north. And P, whether the use causes a decrease in level of service concurrency or any listed, or anything listed in Chapter 5, and I'm not going to read the rest of it. The staff answered how it will affect the services, but they don't answer how it will not have an effect on the health and safety and welfare of the citizens. Plus, this requirement needs to be rewritten as Chapter 5 of the ULDC only addresses concurrency. It doesn't say anything about the health, safety, and welfare. As for what the staff presented briefly about the property being annexed in 2000, they did flop it up, flip it up there, and it did reference the Glosson Carlton property. So, my question to staff in their rebuttal, I would like to know that Chapter 2 of the comprehensive plan, Goal 3 and Objective 9, the Policy 9.14, where no public water or sewer service will be provided to the agricultural estates portion of the Glosson Carlton property. I'd hate to have you go through all this and then find out that your own comprehensive plan is going to stop you from bringing the sewer to this area. So, if the staff could answer that, that'd be great. And then, most of my stuff is a repeat, and I do, the residents chose to live in an agricultural zone for its tranquility, safety, aesthetics, and the community services. Diminishing this with encroaching industrial activities can greatly reduce residents' quality of life and well-being. The city should protect its residents. And the agricultural area was developed first and zoned accordingly. Changing course to disrupt this in favor of industrial ambitions is not good planning. It could be considered a breach of trust with the residents. And I believe I am done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to rebuttal, these are five minutes each in the order of applicant, staff, aggrieved party. So, applicant, you are back up, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, Jeffrey Boone representing the applicant. In the interest of time and in order not to be duplicative, since you all just were with us, all of us here for the past couple hours, I'd just like to request that all of our testimony and evidence from the immediately preceding comprehensive plan amendment public hearing be made part of this record because you heard it. And if it's, if that's all made part of this record, then I don't need to repeat it. And therefore, in rebuttal, just say that, you know, your staff, your staff's thoroughly reviewed this rezoning application. This rezoning application has nothing to do with any residential development. It's strictly just for industrial. Your staff's thoroughly reviewed it. They do not have any issues and they support our request, and we'd respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steph?
Carl Vinge, Planning and Zoning. I have been sworn. So, we just kind of want to reiterate, we cannot discuss any of the residential multifamily aspects of this property since it is not part of this petition. Only the 55 acres industrial ILW part is. We mentioned, I mentioned before about the storefront appearance. That is just, as you've been down Bennerston, they all have a storefront. It's just notification from the street. And this grant doesn't only apply to AC4. It applies to all jobs created by the grant project. And lastly, this isn't in the agricultural estates. Again, that's been reiterated multiple times. And we would also like all of our previous statements made part of this record as well.
Thank you, sir. Aggrieved parties, five minutes each. If you have none, just come up and so-state.
I just want to put on the record all of my further previous statements under 2023-25. They stand as far as this project also.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Chokars?
My name is Pam Chokars and I have been sworn. We didn't do our presentation for the residential. We did it specifically all on the industrial. What we're trying to say is the staff's presentation for the comp plan includes the residential acreage in it. If you read the staff responses, you'll see residential in it, supporting it. It shouldn't be in there. It should be industrial only because we're rezoning this portion, portion of land to industrial. And then I did want to know is, I know this is not in the agricultural estates. What we're going through is that future land use is called agricultural estates. So, for this no zoning designation, you still have to answer that Chapter 2 and that Objective 9 Policy 9.14 to say it's provided in the agricultural estates portion of the Glosson Carlton property. And then refer to the agricultural estates. That's the land use portion. So, it's not, Glosson Carlton property is not in the agricultural estates because I did mention before. When you look at the property transfers for the houses across the street and you look at mine, Glosson Carlton is never part of our property transfers. They're all owned by someone else. So, that's why I wanted to know the question, if that was going to pertain to this or not. We know that this is not the agricultural estates per se, that this is different, but that agricultural estates was on that future land use map, and that's how we had to refer to it. And then I think that's it for my rebuttal.
Thank you, ma'am. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes. Jennifer Nickel, Kim Peeler, and Susan Ballmer.
You have three minutes, ma'am.
Jennifer Nickel and I have been sworn. At the risk of reiterating things I've already said, I wanted to address the ULDC, Chapter 1, Section 1 through 12G. It will horribly affect the living conditions of the neighborhood right across the street. I don't know if staff finds that it complements Toledo Village. That doesn't exist. It's a drawing. How does it complement the people of North Port Estates? They do exist and have lived there for 20 years. They matter, and they're not mentioned in the report. ULDC, Chapter 1, Section 1 through 12H, whether the change will increase traffic congestion or affect public safety. I don't know how anyone can say that it wouldn't influence both. Staff finds that it has no direct influence on traffic congestion with trucks and, you know, the comings and goings of all the residents there. It will be a really dangerous situation. There's not going to be any way to safely take a bicycle or a horse to the preserves. When we built our home there, the road was chalked out. There was no access to Toledo Blade or 75. Now, the ramp to 75 at peak times, it's impossible to turn left safely. You have to make a U-turn or risk an accident. This area is so full of wildlife. We see deer, hogs, turtles, coyotes, alligators. You may not see them all the time, but they're certainly there. So, I don't believe that industrial fits in this area. I don't feel like it is right to have it next to the agricultural estates and the wildlife preserves. And I don't agree with staff's findings. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Kim Peeler, and I have been sworn. And I appreciate y'all listening to everything that we have to say. I know it's been long, but I think a really big fly in the ointment, so to speak, is this industrial portion of this. While it's been made very clear that this is not the estates, it is. When the neighborhood meeting happened, it was to talk to all the neighbors. We were all included in that. Our opinion was important. We were, that process needed to happen because it affects us. Yet now, we're being told it's technically not the estates. But, I digress. My concern is with the future land element goal, one, where it talks about the enjoyment of natural and man-made resources and being things that are incompatible land uses and environmental degradation. We've already established that with Swift Mudd's approval, we're going to fill in these wetlands. It's in the plan. It's in the concept. We've talked about the potential for 600 jobs, but there's no guarantee. There's no guarantee that whatever industrial unit comes in doesn't bring their own people. That's a very real possibility. And then, maybe we don't have zero jobs, but maybe we don't have 600. I can tell you a story from tonight, and I'll be really quick, is that tonight, as I was going home on Toledo Blade, I had to back up down Toledo Blade in order for a tractor-trailer to turn from Tropicare onto Toledo Blade. So, when we talk about that this will be four lanes in the future, we all know how DOT works. That's, that's not going to happen anytime soon, yet all of this traffic is going to be coming to this area. Our light industrial, when we talk about those things that potentially qualify as light industrial, there are things like heavy machinery repair shops, hotels, laboratory researches, our favorite, storage facilities, automobile repair shops, dealerships, car washes, our other favorite. These things will bring an amount of traffic to that dead end that ends at a preserve that is not capable of taking that kind of traffic. Do we need industrial and commercial stuff in our area? Yes, but not in this spot. This isn't the right spot for that. Maybe on paper it looks like it is, but in reality, it doesn't work. It just is too big of a project for that small of an area, and it really would harm all the people in that area who were originally considered part of the neighborhood meeting. Thank you.
I'm Susan Ballmer, and I have been sworn. I know we're all tired, but this is just as important as what we talked about before. Goal one of the future land use shows incompatible land use and environmental degradation. As the land is elevated for development, it creates a mixture of problems. Where's the water runoff from the elevated buildings and parking lot in this 55 acres going to go? Are we creating another flood situation like that which occurs at Sumter? Common sense tells us that there is no way, even if we put in retention ponds, that it's going to hold the water runoff. Tropicare and Chamberlain, along with areas of the Craden Waterway, were flooded last year and do often. If you take the wetlands and build on them, eliminating their effectiveness, you are maximizing the threat to health, safety, welfare of nearby neighborhoods. Your goal number four is to provide diversity of neighborhoods by implementing targeted development. The staff says the industrial portion should offer safety, stability, property values, mobility, and aesthetic features. And you are including like street, trees, and entry features. I don't think that helps. Industrial zoning does not meet any of these needs. You're increasing hazards to our neighborhoods and preserves that have connectivity to homeowners already in that area. Rezoning does not fit with this area. We do not agree with staff findings that changing to industrial is okay because the residential portion will fulfill these requirements. Their proposed position to change the industrial and should not include what might or might not be developed in rezoning. How do you know for sure this project will be anything like the proposed plan, especially for the light industrial? How can the affected neighbors rely on the industrial area? What will it look like? What are the anticipated changes to traffic, safety, and all the other things? What about our privacy? We can be sure that the agricultural land will be adversely affected. Think about this development, and if it's 43, if it raises to 43%, then something is wrong with the planning in the city. We have to need, we need more in other areas. And I think we need to think about fulfilling the city's job requirements for putting in the infrastructure. Thank you.
Craig Beal, Richard Kane, and Mary Jude-Moffett.
My name is Craig Beal and I have been sworn. So, we've heard a lot of stuff tonight. They have brought in conceptual plans. We have yet to see real plans. What bothers me is all this stuff going on in this little area that's conceptual and the city planner, oh, we're going to put the fire station over there. We're going to put industrial over there. Well, the property the city just bought is residential, and it was sold to that developer to remain residential. And now, you're going to put the police station and the fire station in my backyard because I live right on the other side of the Craden Walkway. So, all this traffic, well, why can't we get a grip on the whole thing? Because Toledo Blade is going to be a four-lane road to nowhere, nowhere. Any way, shape, or form, it goes nowhere. So, what are you going to do when one of those trucks pulls in there on a 53-footer and he can't turn around? It's going to be in her front yard. So, all I'm saying is, come up with a plan. Give us a plan. Give us something hard to look at. We're just flipping out cards like we're dealing poker here. But you guys are making decisions on that, and it's happening in that whole immediate area. What's going on here? Get a grip on it. Have your planning department get a grip on it. They saying they thoroughly looked at this stuff? How many wetlands are they going to impact on this 55 acres? I want to know right now, how many acres? Crickets? Nobody can tell me, but they've studied it and they've approved it. Thank you.
Mary Jude-Moffett, I have been sworn. I got to tell you, I'm so disappointed in the vote tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Emrick and McDowell for voting for us. And I think we feel like you heard us and you understand. You know, in the PZAD meeting, the staff, we talked about neighborhood, and the staff said that that really only refers to the property itself. But, you know, he might be correct on paper, but not in principle. Please, have any of you gone to see this place? Craig just mentioned it's a dead end there. It's a beautiful area. I hope that you would go see it. I hope that you did before this vote. It's a beautiful area, and to imagine that it's going to have, you know, business there like that is just a shame. I'm not even going to go through the things I had because I'm so disappointed. It seems to me that the grant is driving the bus here. Why do we accept grant, write up a grant, and try to get a grant without a plan? It seems like tonight's a desperate decision to meet that grant because we need jobs now. I just don't understand. What would we do if that developer never showed up? What would we do? So, I wanted to ask commissioners, please, ask the developer to come back with a new plan. I know there's talk about it can't be in the back, but if there are going to be buildings in this large property, let's come up with something better. I don't understand why. I feel like this is a token off- I feel like this is a token offering, because they know we need jobs, and let's just do a sliver to get it approved, so it would look like we're trying to get jobs for the city and get that development in for the housing. You know, the other places, the other developments south have been mentioned time and time again at the exclusion of the people that live across the road. They're further back in. This is right on the road facing them. I can't imagine what it's going to be like to live there. The residents who live there should matter as much as that developer and the two other projects. It's obvious the current residents have been excluded, forgotten, ignored. I thought we were trying to be a city of unity. Please, do the right thing.
Thank you, City Clerk. I am opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I think this is a question for the applicant. He said that the building is only going to be on one-third of the 55 acres, that two-thirds is going to remain, like, I'm not sure what. If one-third is going to have the building, is that just the building, or is that the, like, parking lot in stormwater? What does the one-third look like? I understand this is at DMP. I just need to know, because it's going to bring up my next question.
Yeah, I think--
Setting the stage for question.
Ken Galander for the record, and sworn. I think we may have to tag-team this one.
Sir, you need to speak into the mic.
So the floor area ratio is a factor, and what we've indicated is, and let me get back to my notes, and this goes back to the comprehensive plan petition of the proposed FAR of .37. That equates to what we've proposed as our concept of providing 900,000 square feet. Your question, I believe, was, does that include pavement areas, parking areas? That is just the square footage of the buildings.
The one-third that was mentioned, he says two-thirds will not have any building on it. So the one-third, is that just the building, or is it the parking lot? Is it the--
No, no, no. So what I, what I said at least, was that the .37 floor area ratio meant that, I mean, a third is .33. So it's roughly a third of the land would have buildings on it. That's what I said.
Buildings. And I'm asking again, when you are saying buildings, is it including the parking lot and the stormwater?
No, no, no. So any wetlands that are left undisturbed would be part of the two-thirds. The parking lot would be part of the two-thirds. The green space--
Thank you.
The greens, well, please give me this chance to answer your question fully. So the buffering, and the stormwater retention, and any just open green space, trees that are planted, shrubbery that's planted, whatever the buffer is, all of those things would be part of the two-thirds of the land that would not have a building on it.
Fantastic. So then, my follow-up question is, all the wetlands that you are going to try to mitigate, why would you mitigate when you have two-thirds of the land not having a building on it?
So in order to, in order to have any development at all on that property, as you know, because it applies to any development, there has to be a stormwater, there has to be a stormwater system that has to be approved by SWIFTMUD, and any impacts to wetlands have to be approved by SWIFTMUD, unless the city of Northport has, I'm telling you, the most detailed stormwater review of any city or county around here. And what you, what SWIFTMUD will not permit, and I don't believe the city of Northport would permit, is wetland impacts for the sake of wetland impacts. Mitigating wetlands is costly, and most developers that I've worked with, and I work with a lot of developers, most developers that I work with only impact wetlands to the minimal, most, I'm sorry, it's been a long night, to the smallest amount possible, because it makes no sense to mitigate, it makes no sense to impact more wetland areas than you need to. It literally makes no sense, and nobody does. And right now, you know, right now, it's the DMP process that will actually go, will detail, will detail all of that. It's understandable that people want to see a plan, and that's when everybody will get to see a plan, but there's no plan until you all approve this.
And I think this is for staff. There is a parcel that is owned directly to the east of the entire 320-acre parcel that is zoned agriculture. It's owned by Currie Ranch Limited Partnership, and it is zoned agricultural district, and its property use is AG. And I'm wondering, how does that fit in with this rezone? And what will be future rezon for the residential?
Elena Ray, Director of Planning, sorry, Director of Development Services, I'm tired. And I have been sworn. It is zoned AG. It is not incompatible with the uses that are proposed on the eastern edge of, eastern end of this property. That this rezoning IL on Toledo Blade does not impact or affect that property.
Will it landblock it?
No. They will have to provide, access would have to be provided along the front. That street that would run along the north side of this property would be a public street that would stub out to that property for a future connection.
I was just concerned that by rezoning it and developing, you're going to landblock a whole property that you can't do.
No, it's not legal to landlock, so we would definitely make sure that that doesn't happen.
So there's been a lot of chatter about extending Toledo Blade. I heard, I think, a public commenter mention Toledo Blade as a road to nowhere. There's been a lot of conversation about extending Toledo Blade all the way to Clark Road. I don't know how much traction that is gaining. I know that really has nothing to do with this, but I have a feeling this is kind of opening that Pandora's Box. If you want to agree or disagree, maybe there is a question. The other question I have, and the last one, Mayor, is transportation, because there is part of the ULDC says that proposed change cannot increase the congestion in public safety. And we have heard that there will be a transportation impact study done. But because the applicant took all of the information from the last meeting, last agenda item, and carried it forward to this one, my question is, how did you reach all those conclusions about the traffic if there has been no traffic impact statement? Because that's not part of this testimony and documents and evidence before us.
Good evening, ma'am chair. My name is Steve Lung. I'm with David Plumber Associates. I'm the traffic consultant for the applicant. I just want to make clarification on the intro to the start of the hearing. I was introduced as a traffic engineer. I'm a transportation planner. I've been a transportation planner for over 30 years in southwest Florida. I've had the pleasure of working with, doing traffic for developments as small as 20 single-family dwelling units subdivisions located at the south tip of Boca Grande, and up to a new town of 20,000 residential units in Batcock Ranch. So I have a lot of experience. And the question was, was there a traffic study done? Yes, there was a traffic study performed. The city adopted level service standard for Toledo Blade at two lanes, and the acceptable level service is LOS D, as in David. Our traffic study included background growth, which includes those new developments to the south, such as Northport Gardens. We had assumed about 30% increase of traffic growth just in the background up to the analysis year of 2028. Along with that, we added the full project development of the, actually included both the proposed industrial as well as the residential, just to have a safety factor in there that we're not underestimating traffic. And the conclusion from that study was that even with all the background growth and the traffic from this project, we were able to maintain a level service C, which is acceptable to the adopted standard of LOS D. That's how we came up to the conclusion that this project did not trigger additional improvements that's not already been anticipated.
So if I can follow up, currently, we're at level of service D, which is acceptable in our comp plan.
No, that's your level service standard you adopted.
Right. Oh, okay. So that's not where we are now.
Correct.
Okay, so where are we now?
Right now--
Before any development? Before, where are we now?
Correct. The existing LOS is C. It's also C.
Okay, so your traffic impact study showed you studied Northport Gardens and this ILW and the residential comp plan amendment part. Did it include Toledo Village?
We included that as overall background traffic, because as you know, with the latest development in the area, many projects have been approved since 2011.
Okay.
And nothing's happened since then, and that's why we only did an indirect growth of 30% of the existing traffic as background, and then we added the entire anticipated traffic for this project.
So is the level of service after the background growth completed, it's a C?
Yes.
Is that C because it's going to go to a four-lane? Or is it a C with a two-lane?
It's a C with the two-lanes.
Okay, that's--
It's, the level service is not directly proportional. There's a wide range to achieve LOS service C. Keep in mind that Toledo Blade, as well as Tropicare, they're major collector roads.
I understand.
And the purpose of major collector roads is to collect traffic, and that's why when you're saying that, well, there's a lot of traffic out there, well, this students' jobs, because it is to collect traffic.
So with all the growth in that general quadrant, including the ILW and the residential 260 acres, we're still at a level C, but our level of service can go down to a D. So when is this four-lane road ever going to get done?
Well, I think when you're, we can only anticipate at this point of growth to the best of our knowledge.
Right.
You know, many roads in the future, everyone's anticipating the potential four-lane, and it never gets there.
Exactly.
And other times where you didn't think you need it, but because of cumulative development and other factors not affiliated with just one project, you will see a need for improvements.
When was the traffic impact study done? And that'll be my last and final question.
I believe it was done May of 2023.
Thank you.
I'd just like to, let me just give Commissioner, those were a lot of detailed questions, just give you a real-world, not hypothetical example of how two-lane roads can become four-lane roads. So right now, the city of Venice is about in its final stage of getting everything done to four-lane Laurel Road from east of I-75 out to where Jack, where Jackoranda Boulevard intersects it. They've been able to get state funding for that, and the city and the county have cooperated, because that's a county road. And even though the traffic studies right now don't show that the two-lane Laurel Road is over capacity, and even if you take in all the approved development, it doesn't show that it's over capacity. The fact that the city said to the county, you know, everybody, you know, this road needs to be four-laned, and the state government approved to the point that they funded several million dollars for it. So that's a, not talking about hypothetical or whatever, that's, what, 10 miles, 20 miles north of here, it's going on, it's going on right now. It hasn't quite yet been approved, but the state funding's been approved, and I think that the developer who's going to build the road was in front of the Venice City Council, it was either today or it was two weeks ago, getting to the final stage of that happening. So it actually can happen. There can be a four-lane road, even where maybe all, the studies don't necessarily say it has to be yet.
Yeah, but that's a multi-jurisdictional thing, so it's a little bit different.
Let me add that it is in our capital improvement element that it will be a four-lane road. So the support is already there to put it in as a four-lane. All of these developers along Toledo Blade, Toledo Village, Northport Gardens, and this one, will obviously be going, would be going through the DMP step. Part of that is, we will be doing developer agreements with them. We're already in the negotiation phase with a developer agreement for North, I'm sorry, for Toledo Village. Part of that developer agreement is what they're going to be contributing to improvements for fire, police, infrastructure, traffic, so, and improvements for intersections and the roadway on Toledo Blade. So that's all part of a negotiation process that we will go through with that developer agreement. It's not part of the rezoning, but it is a stage that will still be coming. Thank you.
Okay, that is looking like the end of our commission questions. I'm looking for closing arguments. These are five-minute conversations, starting with our aggrieved parties. And if you don't have any, if you wouldn't mind just coming up and stating your name and that you have no closing argument.
Carolyn Price, I have been sworn. I do have a question. If they four-lain that road, is there going to be a median? If there's a median, how am I going to turn left and get into my driveway? Am I going to have to go all the way to the dead end, go down the road into the housing development somewhere, make a U-turn, and then come back so I can get into my driveway?
This is really not the time for additional questions, but I'm just wondering if staff would be willing to-- No. Yeah, I think it's just too early in the process to really be able to answer that question. Ms. Chokaros?
Hi, my name's Pam Chokaros, and I have been sworn. Closing arguments, industrial is really not a good fit for this area. And we've mentioned before that with this live local law, we don't know what's going to come in. It's going to open up this property to go into, what are we going to develop here? Is it going to be the low-income housing or not? So that's one of the options that you run a chance into with changing this to industrial. Also, we know we need jobs in the city. Industrial jobs, like I had mentioned before, for all the worker bees, they're only going to make around $18 an hour, which is no way going to be able for a single person or someone, you know, maybe if you're married, you'll be able to afford a better, higher income, a nicer home, but someone that's single, working there, it's not enough money for someone to be living on, especially in this day and age. So if we're looking to entice more business to come here, keeping this, instead of zoning it industrial, it should probably be an office park where we can get those higher-paying jobs. And I do have, I think that traffic study, if I'm not mistaken, the one traffic study that was submitted with the developers' plans may not have been done in 2023. I believe it was done in 2022, and unfortunately, I can't access my internet to get into it. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Staff? Staff?
Carl Benj, planning and zoning. Really, we just want to state that ILW is the only implementing zoning district for the industrial future land use designation. So that's pretty much.
Thank you, sir. Applicant?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. No argument here with staff. We, we're in agreement with their analysis of the application and their recommendation for approval. In summary, again, there's no residential zoning as part of this. This is simply the industrial zoning. This is the, one of the I-75 interchange areas in the city. This approval, this rezoning would be a step towards the grant request, being able to satisfy the requirements of the grant request. There are a lot of issues that you've heard about tonight that will be addressed at the development master plan, the DMP stage. And again, that's a full public hearing with the full rights of all the public to participate. The traffic study, I'm told by our consultant, was done in June of 2023. But that really doesn't matter. What really is important is the date that it goes to, which I believe is 2028. That's what Mr. Lund said. That's the key. And it was submitted to staff. We followed all the regulations, rules, city rules, regulations about traffic study. You've heard, and I just want to reiterate, that this property was annexed 23 years ago. And it was, it was not annexed to continue in agricultural use. It was annexed for development. In fact, if the intention for this property was to always remain in agricultural use, there would have been no reason to annex it. It would just stayed in the unincorporated Sarasota County. The issues, again, not to repeat ourselves, but the issues about flooding permits required from Southwest Florida Water Management District and from the city of Northport. Engineers have to run models. And if there's any issues with flooding, then you don't get approved, or you have to go back and start all over again. You've been told that wetland impacts have been approved. They have not. In fact, I checked with our engineer. There's been no submittal even to get wetland impact approved because we have to get the rezoning done, and then we have to come back with the DMP. Finally, commissioners, there is, there is more than adequate amount of competent substantial evidence in the record to show that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the city's Unified Land Development Code and any other applicable regulations. We respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I am closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I move to continue ordinance number 2023-26 to a second reading on a date to be determined and find that based on the competent substantial evidence, the rezoning will not adversely affect the interest, health, safety, and general welfare, and that the specific requirements in the city of Northport Comprehensive Plan and the standards listed in Section 1-33E1 of the Unified Land Development Code have been met.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor made by Vice Mayor White, seconded by Commissioner Stokes to continue ordinance number 2023-26 to a second reading on a date to be determined and find that based on competent substantial evidence, the rezoning will not adversely affect requirements, the interest, health, safety, and general welfare, and that specific requirements in the city of Northport Comprehensive Plan and the standards listed in Section 1-33E1 of the Unified Land Development Code has been met. If there is nothing more to that, let's vote. And that motion passes three to two with Commissioner Emmerich and Commissioner McDowell dissenting. Commissioner Emmerich, do you wish to comment?
No, same reasoning.
Commissioner McDowell?
Yes, I dissented because the ILW does not fit with the residential properties to the west and the south and conservation properties that surround this rezoned area. I also dissented because of, I dissented on the comp plan amendment and because of the unintended consequences of the Live Local Act could affect this rezon. Can't go back.
Moving on to ordinance's second reading, item number 2023-19. This is a quasi-judicial hearing. City clerk, would you read this ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number 2023-19, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, adopting the Toledo Village Village District Pattern Plan for approximately 2,086 acre area located north of Interstate 75, east of Toledo Blade Boulevard, west of Orange Hammock Wildlife Management Area, and south of the city and Northport Municipal Boundary, amending the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter 53, Article 18-V Village, Section 53-214, subsection F, to incorporate the pattern plan by reference, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Are we swearing in, city clerk?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I move, which enough provide testimony, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to provide is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge to help you guide?
Ex parte, Commissioner McDowell.
None since first reading, mayor.
Commissioner Stokes? None for me since first reading. Vice Mayor?
Nothing additional.
Commissioner Emmerich? City clerk, are there any aggrieved parties in this matter?
Yeah, none.
Okay, we'll move on to presentations then. Applicant, you are first up.
Good evening. For the record, Jackson Boone, attorney general, firm agent for the applicant. Just wanted to let you all know, no changes from first reading. We're back in front of you all, other than we made the change to the table that you all requested to provide clarification of where that development, where those standards applied to. You'd asked about the neighborhood centers and the park. But other than that, that's it. Will be available for any questions you all may have.
Thank you for that, sir. Applicant? Mr. Benj, you need roller skates.
Carl Benj, planning and zoning. I have been sworn. So we would like to just carry forward our testimony from the first reading. The applicant has made the change to the VDPP as requested, and we're available for any questions to be had.
Thank you for that. Any rebuttal? Applicant?
No, ma'am.
Great. Staff?
We have nothing further. Thanks.
Thank you. City clerk, do we have any public comment on this matter?
We have one. Pam Tokars?
Hi, my name's Pam Tokars, and I have been sworn. Don't worry, guys, I don't have a presentation. I just, and I apologize, I just don't know how many acres of commercial. I know there was an issue before regarding the acres of commercial, and I just want, and now that we have this next, this last chance, that if the commission would consider maybe increasing the acreage of commercial, because this is a perfect opportunity. We're adding 3,000 homes to this division, and you're still, more homes, the commercial goes down. It would be a perfect opportunity to add more commercial. And I kind of got excited when I heard that this was going to come because I would like to just drive down my street to go to maybe more than, I think it was 10 acres the last time I heard, more than 10 acres of shops. Because if you don't, there's only going to be 10 acres of shops. I'm not going to come shop there. I would like to have more high-end restaurants because I will go and spend my money at a high-end restaurant, even though I know these are not the types of jobs that we need to have here with commercial, but it would still be nice to have a nice little area to go with since we are a plotted-out community where everything is single-family homes. We don't really have a town center. So it would be great to have this opportunity now to have something like that where we have more commercial in an area where it's convenient to some people, especially now that we're going to be adding all this other stuff to it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell?
Yes, the applicant said that changes were made to the development standards to include the Village Center. I'm sorry, Neighborhood Center. I'm looking at second reading ordinance, and I do not see those changes incorporated in the ordinance for second reading.
I apologize. Can you repeat the question?
So the applicant said that there were changes made to the development standards for the Village Park, I'm sorry, for the Village Center, that they included it in the development standards chart. And I'm looking at second reading, and I do not see anything updated.
I, I can look into that. I don't have it on me right now.
And if you have it, could you put it up on the overhead so I can take a quick peek On page 15, and I'm looking at second reading ordinance.
Okay, I'm not sure, ma'am, if I can pull it up. Lori Barnes, Assistant Director, Development Services. I'm not sure if I can pull it up that easily onto the screen. I can advise that we received an inquiry from the city manager's office related to the changes, the concern that the changes were not included in the second reading pattern plan. And we did a side-by-side comparison of the pattern plan, the resubmitted pattern plan that we had in our office with the changes and the one that was uploaded as part of the agenda packet, and we responded to that email. So are you able to pull it up? I see, I see. So we did respond to the ordinance, and we did have the second reading, the updated ordinance for the second reading, but it was not populated on the agenda. So we will be certain to provide that to the clerk for the execution of the ordinance.
Can you put it up on the screen so I can take a look at it? I can't, you know, we can't vote on it if it's.
Again, for the record, Jackson Boone, agent for the applicant, I have been sworn. I apologize for any confusion I may have caused here. If you recall, the first hearing, and if I could use the overhead, if there's one available, to be perfectly clear, we haven't changed any development standards, anything of that nature. At the first hearing, we have the development standards table, table one, and there are three columns. And they all asked us to add verbiage in the three labeling of the columns to make it clearer of which areas those apply to. So in responding to that request, that was the only revision we made. I spoke with Rhea Lopez, our planner, who said that we have submitted that to staff. But if I could, if an overhead is available, I can show you how simple this labeling is. So here, you can see, if we could get there, where the, and I apologize, it's very, very small, so let me try to.
Can you please read what letter two, or number two says at the bottom?
Village Center One refers to the Village Center proposed along Toledo Blade Boulevard, Boulevard, excuse me. Village Center Two refers to the Village Center co-located within the Village Park. And then here, boxed in up top, it says mixed-use neighborhood slash Village Center One. What we had in front of you all at first reading, and you asked us to revise to make it more clear, just said mixed-use neighborhood.
Correct.
So we added Village Center One there, so you all knew that that also applied, Village Center One. And then the second box, that says Village Park, Neighborhood Center, Village Center Two. What you all had at first reading, and you asked us to provide additional verbiage to clarify, said Village Center, Village Park, Neighborhood Center. So again, we revised that pursuant to your all requests, label it Village Center or Village Park, Neighborhood Center, Village Center Two.
Thank you very much for making those changes because I think it's very important to make sure that Village Center is included instead of excluded like it was at first reading. But the problem still exists. It's not in the second readings ordinance as it's showing up on this screen. So maybe we can include that in the motion to make sure that those edits get recaptured into it. And I also see that, my next question, you changed western to eastern, the typo. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have, mayor. Thank you very much.
I think we're on applicant closing arguments.
No, ma'am. To reiterate just what we had at the first reading, we're very excited to be at this stage in front of you all, and we would respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, everyone. I'm closing this, whoop, I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
Can you get my little cheat sheet up, mayor? Just to make sure it's all. Make a motion, mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023-19 as presented with the two edits with the two edits discussed at this meeting to be included in the final ordinance for adoption.
We have a motion on the floor to adopt ordinance number 2023-19 as presented with the two edits requested during this meeting. Can you give that to me again?
With the two edits discussed at this meeting to be captured in the final adoption ordinance and VDPP.
Great. Do I hear a second?
Not a second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Would you reread that? Recording secretary?
To adopt ordinance 2023-19 as presented, including the two edits discussed at this meeting to be included in the final ordinance for adoption.
Thank you for that. Our motion maker was Commissioner McDowell, seconded by Commissioner Stokes. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote, please. That motion passes five to zero. Moving on to ordinance number 2023-20, city clerk, would you read this item by title only?
Ordinance number 2023-20, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, related to the operation of mobile food vendors at Warm Mineral Springs Park, amending the code of the city of Northport, Florida, Section 34-1, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you for that. City clerk, city manager, this is your item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That requested, upon the second reading, you adopt ordinance 2023 as presented. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. I'm opening the floor to questions.
I'll make a motion, mayor?
Well, let's get public comment first, Commissioner. City clerk? Oh, wow. You have your wish, Commissioner McDowell.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number.
Let me close the hearing first and then accept your motion.
Got you.
You're all set.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2023-20 as presented at second reading.
Second. We have a motion on the floor made by Commissioner McDowell and seconded by Vice Mayor White to adopt ordinance number 2023-20 as presented at second reading. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote, please. That motion passes five to zero. Ordinance number 2023-23, city clerk, would you read this by title only?
Ordinance number 2023-23, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida, related to lodging out-of-doors on private and city-owned property, creating a new section 46-4 of the code of the city of Northport, Florida, repealing Chapter 46, Article 5, camping of the code of the city of Northport, Florida, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you for that, city clerk. City manager, this is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We request that the city adopt the camping ordinance number 20-23-23. We're happy to answer any questions you may have. We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. I'm opening up the floor. Not seeing any questions. City clerk, do we have public comment? And I'm looking for a motion. I'm closing this public... And requesting a motion.
I'll give you a motion. I move to adopt ordinance number 2023-23 as presented.
Do I hear a second? Have a motion on the floor to adopt ordinance number 2023-23 as presented, made by Commissioner Stokes and seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. If there's nothing more to that, let's please vote. And that motion passes five to zero. Moving on to ordinance number 2023-24, city clerk, title only, please.
Ordinance number 2023-24, an ordinance of the city of Northport, Florida regarding parking and storage of certain vehicles on residential lots, amending the code of the city of Northport, Florida, section fifty-nine dash one and section fifty-nine dash two, and repealing section fifty-nine dash sixteen of the code of the city of Northport, Florida, providing for findings, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, city clerk. Once again, city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We respectfully ask that the city commission approve to adopt ordinance number twenty-three dash twenty-four. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, opening the floor to Commissioner questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, last night I realized, and I don't know if it needs to be in here, but in this code, we have HOAs that have their own higher standards for parking on their properties, but we also have HOAs that have public roadways that are public-owned. Is there something that we need to do to exempt these HOAs on these public right-of-ways?
Come on down. You are getting your steps in tonight, ma'am.
She's getting her steps in for the whole week.
Okay, I'm gonna sit down for the rest of the week. Oh, and I, Director of Development Services, no, ma'am, good question. But we don't need to do anything that exempts them. We, we don't regulate anything as far as property standards typically within those HOAs. Their standards are much more strict than ours are. Not only do they not allow them to park on their grass, some of them don't allow them to park overnight in their driveway. I can't park, in my neighborhood, I can't park in the street overnight. In fact, I can't park for more than an hour.
But is that a public, is that public roads, though?
It is.
And the reason that it popped in my head is because I was driving through Jockey Club. It's an HOA, public roads.
Yep.
So, would this apply?
Yeah. No, this would, this would not apply on the public roads.
Public right-of-ways?
Public right-of-ways. They couldn't park in the public right-of-ways, but they would also have to abide by the more strict standards that the Jockey Club has.
I just wanted to double-check.
We got, we got you, Commissioner. Are you all set?
Yeah, that's it.
Great, thank you. Any public comments, city clerk?
Yes, Jennifer Bramlett. I oppose telling people what vehicles can be parked at their home and where they can park them. They should be able to park wherever they like at their residence as long as it does not pose a hazard or, to traffic or cause accidents. Jason Bramlett. If a person owns their land, then they should be able to park whatever they want on their own land so long as it is not blocking view of traffic or causing a safety hazard, and that's all.
Thank you. I'm closing this public hearing and requesting a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Move to adopt ordinance number 2023-24 as presented.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor made by Vice Mayor White and seconded by Commissioner Stokes to adopt ordinance number 2023-24 as presented. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote, please. And that motion passes four to one with Debbie McDowell dissenting. Do you want to comment, Commissioner?
Ma'am, I dissent it because the easements are my property, and I should be able to park my car on my property. And I do not agree with the blanket that I am responsible for any damage to the right-of-way that I didn't cause, and there's no provision to allow me to plead my case.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to general business, item...
We've got a five-minute health break here.
Oh, we're so, almost there.
Yeah, but this is not gonna be...
Okay, five minutes. We will come back at eleven...
Right, I can't do the math.
Seventeen, eleven seventeen. Seventeen, and we are coming into the home stretch, so let's get to it. On to general business, item number twenty-three dash fourteen zero eight. This is discussion and possible action regarding the City Manager's annual evaluation and amendment to the City Manager's employment agreement relating to term and notice requirements for termination and resignation. City manager, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you all for your continued support, and I'm grateful for your feedback during this year's vast evaluation. I will use it to be a better manager as we move forward. I also want to publicly, publicly thank our amazing team, and I mean everyone, excluding no one. We have such a caring and dedicated group of individuals, and I'm proud to work beside them each and every day. Tonight, I am seeking your direction to work with the city attorney on amending our current contract in order to better prepare the city and the manager in case of separation. If the board approves, we will work together on language changes and bring them back for your consideration. The original contract was rightfully so written to better protect the city against the situation of an underperforming manager. And based on the scores of my first two years here, I believe that myself and my team have exceeded those expectations and could allow for two contract amendments for your consideration. The first item is on page one, article one B. The term is stated for four years, but will remain in, remain in force if not amended or extended, therefore making it an annual contract. My recommendation is to remove the four-year timeframe and make it an annual contract that will remain in place unless one of the reasons for separation occurs in the contract. The board still retains the right to terminate the city manager with or without cause as the contract currently states, at any time. This just removes the four-year timeframe. The second item is on page six, article six A. This resignation provision states a minimum of thirty days' written notice of employment termination or an earlier date as determined by majority vote of the entire commission. I recommend adding the language that allows the thirty-day to be minimum unless the majority of the board and the city manager agree on a different time period. The benefit of this change would ensure that at least thirty days is provided for separation, and the city manager is not terminated immediately upon submitting a resignation. All other terms in the contract would continue and be perfect, and to be perfectly clear, these changes in no way affect this board or any future board from terminating the city manager with cause as currently outlined in the agreement. My goal is only to offer a smoother transition for both parties in case we ever get to a point of terminating without cause. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, I'm opening up the floor to commission questions. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I don't see the amended agreement in the backup material. I understand that we'd have to approve it before it could be amended, and I get that. But usually, if there's an amended, it's kind of like a underlying...
There's no amendment yet. We're asking for permission to consult on an amendment to bring to you.
Well, I'm sorry, I missed that part. I thought that's what you were asking to have it amended to. Okay. So, you'll be bringing back a new agreement?
If the board agrees.
Okay.
If the board says no, then we will not go forward.
So, the only thing that I am curious about, maybe city attorney can help me with this, this thirty days, so, so if he's terminated without cause, we have to give him thirty days' notice. It's already in the contract. Is this saying that we can still give him thirty days' notice, and he can waive that, and we can waive the thirty days that he's staying here? I mean...
It would, it would depend on how it's drafted and what the direction of the...
Okay, maybe it should just wait. I, it's hard to, one, it's late. Two, we don't have potential language to really be able to understand what exactly it is that he's...
Let me answer the question. The current language states that if I submit you a resignation for thirty days, you as a board have the right to say, "We don't want you to stay for thirty days. We want you to leave right now." I'm asking for is that if I submit you a resignation for thirty days, that unless the board and the city manager agree on a different date, that thirty days will remain in effect.
Okay, okay.
It avoids the, you're terminated, please leave the building tomorrow scenario.
But sometimes there are scenarios that, that has to happen.
But that would be with cause.
Of course.
No, there's sometimes that it happens without cause.
That's sort of what we need to determine.
Well, well...
Exactly.
Well, the rationale for asking for the consideration is that for the past two years, you've seen what I've brought to the table as a city manager. I believe it's less likely for that situation to occur. If you believe that it is more likely to occur, then you can vote differently. But that's the reason for the request.
And I, I appreciate the reason for the request, but I was here when we had a annual review, and everything was fine, only to find out things were not fine, and we were asking for resignation at that same meeting. So, so it's... I, I would have to see the language.
Commissioner Stokes.
The ask here is only that we okay you to go out and bring this back to us, so I don't see a problem with that.
Correct.
We're not making any decision on it until it comes back and we see what it is.
Do we need a motion, or will, what's the word? We need a motion on seeing...
There's a motion in the...
Oh, there is in the script. It's late, folks. Does someone want to make a motion? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Ma'am, can I have a public comment first, please? That would be a...
Excellent idea.
Sorry. Maria Leslie. The city manager position desperately needs to be filled by someone who puts Northport and its residents first. That is not Jerome Fletcher. He goes behind the backs of the commission, whom is supposed to listen to the residents, and believes that he is helping the city by not listening to the majority votes for things such as Warminal Springs. When challenged, she acts like a child who cannot even take constructive criticism. Body language is also noted at meetings, and is, is constantly dismissive when it is obviously not something he wants to hear. These are not leadership qualities, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make it. I move to direct the city attorney to draft amendments to the city manager's contract relating to term and notice requirements for termination and resignation.
Do I hear a second? That's a jump ball. I'll give it to Commissioner Emmerich. So, we have a motion on the floor to direct the city attorney to draft amendments to the city manager's contract relating to term and notice requirements for termination and resignation. Commissioner Stokes is our motion maker, seconded by Commissioner Emmerich. Let's vote, please. And that motion passes five to zero. We also need to discuss a salary increase. The floor is open. Commissioner Emmerich.
That's what I wanted to make sure, because we jumped to the second motion prior to the first one. I wanted to know if I missed something about discussing his interest.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Stokes.
Just a question. Our range is, what, maximum of five percent?
I don't think we have an established range. I don't see, I'm seeing no from head of HR. So, it's pretty free form.
Got you.
Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah. You've done a great job, sir. I, I think you've seen it in all of our evaluations. You have led this team. You've come up with a lot of good ideas, a lot of good plans. You know, the public may not know the savvy about everything that goes on, but you keep truckin', and you keep your head up, and we appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you, sir.
I would, I would suggest a five percent salary increase, if you want to discuss that.
I'm not seeing any lights on. I'll, I'll go in. I agree. I've just been so impressed with the major projects and all kinds of things. In the past two years, I've seen more major projects hit implementation than I've, than I've seen in all the previous years of watching the city. And the city manager has delivered on that in the face of one or two major crises per year since he... year since he's been here. So I'm amazingly impressed by him. Commissioner Stokes.
At the risk of giving you a bigger head, you know, I also... I mean, you know, nobody's perfect in this world, but I got to tell you, in my opinion, you're the right guy for the right time. This city has faced challenges, and you've risen to them. You have gone above and beyond. You have put in the hours, you've put in the energy, you have the smarts, you have the experience, and our city is moving in the right direction. There isn't anybody out there that you can't poke at and point to things that might be different or changed, or people might say, gee, I might have done this different or said that different. But the truth is, you get my kudos. You do. You've done a great job, and, you know, you inspire me to work harder to help this city. So, you know, I really do believe that the vast majority of our city feels the same way. I am even more certain that almost all the city staff feels the same way, and, you know, keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, as they said, I don't know if your head can take this, that you...
I'll try my best.
But I am one who is greatly appreciative and respects a process and having a plan. I always told my son that whatever you want to do, what's your plan? And in a nutshell, the projects and plans are continually coming to fruition, things that have been on the shelf, and I speak this as somebody who has lived here in the same house for 32 years, and seeing things talked about, and then what happened? Like Price Boulevard, that was a running joke in the city, and we had a ribbon cutting for it, and that is finally happening. Of course, I was thrilled that we passed a decent tree protection ordinance that at least has mitigation fees in it, and voila, like, it's just been a year. I had to go back to see the dates, but in just a year, we now have a natural resource department. And again, I sat on... What was... Is Julie still here, Ms. Belia?
She's right there.
Oh, there she is.
Oh, there she is. She was under the table.
Wake up, Julie.
When I served on the Beautification and Tree Council, Ms. Belia was the liaison for that, and that was over 20 years ago. And we talked about a natural resource department at that time. Nothing ever happened. I think the EAB even talked about that. Never happened. And here it is, a year later, we have finally a natural resource department, a year from the tree ordinance being passed. ULDC, that's not a good pill to swallow. It's difficult, and we heard comments tonight from people that aren't happy with some of those things, but it's something that has to be done. And this is our jobs to handle those tough things and make those calls, but the city manager just keeps putting schedules, workshops, this, that, the other thing, and it's just... It's great. Warm in all springs, again, another hot topic, but again, something had to be done, and we've had some great conversations. And finally, he has put forth a direction for that, not final, of course, but at least we're getting somewhere. We are making progress and finally coming to an answer for what to do about warm in all springs. But what's near and dear to my heart is the initiative, the community of unity initiative, and giving residents the opportunity to have a casual setting when we go to places like the Jockey Club. And people have given me a lot of feedback on that, that they appreciate the fact that they can... There's plenty of time for them to ask questions, and they don't just feel like they're being talked to all the time, because there's a real difference between talking to people and allowing them to ask questions and get information. But most of all, I've really been impressed with our city manager, that he always displays his appreciation and respect for our city staff, who he's charged with overseeing, and which is evidenced by him expecting only the best from his staff to rise to the highest level attainable in order for the city of Northport's operations to run smoothly, effectively, and efficiently for the benefit of all of our residents. And that's what I've been really impressed with seeing. Again, I was here before, well, just at the time that the city changed to having a city manager. So I've been through my slew of city managers, and have to say, city manager, there's no one that compares to what you've done in this short amount of time. And in mortal words of Forrest Gump, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor.
I see Commissioner McDowell on the board. Go ahead, ma'am.
So, yes, I am the one that gave you the lowest score, but I do not want to focus on the reasons of those low scores, because this, to me, is a new beginning, another new year ahead of us, and I really hope that we will continue to work towards mutual respect and agreement. I also do not want to lose sight of the compliments that I did give you in your review, and there were many, if people would take the time to read it. So with that said, I wish you well in this next coming year. I don't think I can approve a 5% raise, because we've given our employees a 4%, 3% CPI, and then the one for the $15 an hour. We gave them an 8% last year. I would be more amenable to a 4%. I'm just sharing that.
Any other thoughts?
I sort of had 5% in my head.
No, we haven't. I'm looking for one.
I'll make a motion if you want.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to approve a 5% salary increase for the city manager based on his performance evaluation effective on his anniversary date of October 1, 2023.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve a 5% salary increase for the city manager made by Commissioner Emmerich, seconded by Commissioner Stokes, based on his performance evaluation effective on his anniversary date of October 1, 2023. If there's nothing more to that, let's vote, please. And that motion passes 4-2-1, with Commissioner McDowell dissenting.
Reasons stated. 4% is where I was going. I was hoping that it would have been listened to, so it could have been unanimous, but it is what it is. 4%, that's what I was willing to go.
I appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Moving on to 23-1422. Discussion and possible action regarding personal banners affixed to city infrastructure to honor local military service members. Commissioner McDowell, I think this was your agenda item.
It was my agenda item.
Would you like to speak?
I will be speaking to it, because I had a citizen who reached out with an idea. She had seen... She is a military mom of an active-duty service member. Many of us have... Know people that are active-duty veterans. We have veterans sitting up on these stairs, former family members that are veterans, just a wide variety, and I just thought it was such a great idea that I had to bring it to you guys to see if you would agree. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the links that I provided in the backup materials about the Hometown Heroes Program. There was also a link about military tribute banners. These banners are affixed to the light pole. Some of them have a picture of the veteran or active-duty. Some of them have just the name and the branch that they served in. Some of them are maybe a gold star mom or dad celebrating their child who gave the ultimate sacrifice. These banners is intended to be paid for by the requestor, not the taxpayers. The taxpayers would be basically paying for the staff to put them up. They're usually up only for two months, for October and November, for Veterans Day. And I know we can't put them on 41, but I thought that it might be a really good idea to task the veterans group to see where this might go, especially in light of our new Veterans Park that's coming in, maybe around here on City Center Green, maybe along Sumter Boulevard, Lido Blade. I don't know how much it would cost. That would take a little bit more research. I don't know how much, you know, how well-received it would be, but I think it's something that we, as a board, should explore and possibly task the Veterans Advisory Board to help us with it, come up with a policy or plan, unless you guys want to move forward. It obviously isn't going to happen this year, but I would really like to see if it could be done for next year. But, so, that's my little brief, little presentation on it.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I see Commissioner Emmerich's light on.
Yeah, and I had gone through this in the backup material, too, and according to the backup material and what they offer, it's not just military. It could be any type of hometown hero. It could be a teacher, it could be a doctor. And again, the recipient's family or whatnot is sponsoring that on the cost of the banner. It would be up to staff to go ahead and put it on a poll. We would definitely have to have a larger discussion on where we would like to have those polls installed for the banners, which could be the Veterans Park once it's constructed, City Center Green, and it depends on the demand, you know? How many are we going to have out there? Is there 10 people interested? Is there 50 people interested? It's a larger discussion that I would love to have come back, and I know we have the young lady in the audience that is the sponsor of this one. Can she come down and say a few words to us, since she's waited here all night?
She sat here all night.
Come on down.
And I think...
She sat through her first full commission meeting, and wow, what a commission meeting it was.
It's a good one.
Going over there.
Right over here, ma'am, yeah. And this way she can give us her opinion on how she would like to see it go.
Well, my name is Patty Connors. I've lived in Northport, oh, like, pushing 30 years now, raised three boys, and all of them graduates of Northport High School. My youngest is decided to make his career ambition... Well, my oldest is a doctor. My middle one is a paramedic fireman, and my baby is the Marine. So being that I'm now following a lot of groups that are involving military, there's this Hometown Hero Program where a lot of cities, particularly like a little downtown area, put up these banners honoring their military. The ones that I have seen are traditionally for active or veterans, but yet the organization you can order these banners from also caters to first responders and teachers, as you mentioned. So I was just very much taken by pride for my children and my son, and I thought that this would be something that I would like to put my hands on and look into doing it and honoring all the military people.
I agree. That's beautiful. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Thank you for staying.
You deserve a purple heart or something. Vice Mayor.
Yes, and I'm glad Commissioner Emmerich brought this up, that I, you know, hometown heroes, yes, I would love to see this be more inclusive with teachers, even nurses, firefighters. I thought it'd be kind of neat to have the banners say where the firehouses are, along whatever street they're on, or the police department, right... Well, right now, you know, it's right here, but eventually wherever the police department is, and it would be great to have them to honor, again, teachers and nurses, even, you know, once that hospital comes in, maybe, you know, we can put them along Sumter to there, and that would just bring a real hometown feel, because I know what you're saying. I've been to places that have...
Well, then to your... Parks.
Yes. That I've been to towns that have this, and it just... To me, that is a community of unity, that people... These are real people that help us and work for us and are hometown heroes. So I would love to see this come back with a lot more information about the cost and things like that. I know we used to do those Christmas decorations on 41, and I think our city staff was involved with bucket trucks, and then the commission said, "No more," because that...
F.D.O.T. said, "No more."
F.D.O.T. said, "No more." Leading up to that, there became an issue of storing them. The chamber was supposed to store them, and then I just remember there was a lot of discussions about that. So if all that can be figured out, we'd love to see it come back with all those details. But thank you, Commissioner McDowell, for bringing this, and thank you for bringing this forward, too.
Commissioner Stokes.
It's a wonderful idea. It'd be great to direct staff to come back with, one, where we could do this, and, two, a definition of what we consider hometown heroes, the categories, because it can be all-encompassing, and maybe should be, but it's certain we could put our city touch on that and who might qualify to fall into those categories, but we got to figure out where to do it, too. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
City manager, who or what group would you see as being the best to lead this planning effort? I'm inclined to the Veterans Advisory Board, too, but if we make it more expansive...
But I think the program specifically, if you use that program, it has specific parameters about who is included. Now, if you go outside of that, I think that's a conversation that needs to be had, but we looked at the information that was provided, and because when Vice Mayor was asking about teachers, and it specifically said who was eligible for the program. So there might need to be some conversation with the flexibility in the program, see what's allowable, and then when we do that, we could come back to you and talk to you more in-depth about some of the roles and responsibilities, and costs, and plans, and locations as well.
Direct staff and leave it up to them.
Yep. Okay, Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, I'm really glad to hear my fellow commissioners on board with this. I am going to advocate that this be for our military. I understand that we have heroes that are in many different other professions, but as a military mom, military daughter, granddaughter, being in the military is quite different, and they are very easily forgotten. And I really think, yes, they get Veterans Day. Kids are going to school on Veterans Day, but they're off for other holidays, and that's something I have no control over. Our veterans, they're not recognized very openly unless it's a family member. So I would be more inclined to, in the beginning, focus on the veterans and see how the program goes, and then as it gets, if it gains traction, possibly open it to other heroes. But I am also very cautious of saying, "This occupation rises to this level when other occupations are just as important." And so I really would like to focus on the military, but...
Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner. Commissioner Emmerich.
Yes, another comment.
I just wanted to maybe...
Oh, I'm sorry.
...interject. You're saying you want to focus... You wanted to focus on the veterans. I certainly want to include active duty as well.
That's what I...
I thought that's what you meant. I just wanted to clarify.
I need veterans as active duty, because eventually they're not going to be active duty. So, yeah, veterans and active duty.
Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, I'm just excited to see this come back and have a conversation, and if we do, you know, like, strict it to military, I'm sort of glad on that as well, other occupations, but it sort of scared me when I started saying about other people, because Val could go out and get one for Phil, just for the hell of it, because that's her hero. And I don't want it to be all inclusive. Oh, Val was going to get one for you, sir?
I'm getting one.
Oh, you're getting one? So we got to be careful on this.
Okay, let's keep it brief.
I'm done. I'm forward.
Yeah, I would like to expand it, and I was using hometown heroes from our own... The Florida Housing Act that has mortgages available, down payments, rather, for their hometown... Florida Housing Act, that has mortgages available, down payments, rather, for their hometown heroes, and I looked up the list of who they consider hometown heroes, so I just don't see the harm. As Commissioner McDowell, I think, said, the circle of honor that's coming, it would be a great place to put the military veterans' things there and spotlight it there, but I don't see the harm in recognizing other hometown heroes that contribute to our community.
I could go either way, quite frankly. I mean, I could argue keeping it just military, I could argue expanding it. I'd sort of like to hear from an advisory group, but this was yours, Commissioner McDowell. Do you want to make a motion?
I'm sorry, did we hear an answer from city manager as to who might this go towards, or should we?
Let them figure it out.
Yeah, start it out at the city manager's office.
I wouldn't put him on the spot.
He's serving all responsibilities.
We are the only ones that can direct for the advisory board to weigh in, not the city manager.
Vice Mayor, if you don't mind, just one second, because I don't know, Michael might want to, Mr. Gall might want to interject as well, but the veterans, it's not a Veterans Advisory Committee, it's a Veterans Park Advisory Committee, so their roles are for the park.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. That does help. Before I ask you for a motion, any public comment?
There is none.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to direct city manager to bring back information and logistics on implementing a banner honor, a banner system program honoring our military veterans in active-duty.
We have a motion on the floor to direct city manager to bring back information and logistics for implementing a banner program system honoring our active-duty veterans.
And, yeah, active-duty and veterans.
Do I hear a second?
Can I make an amendment?
You can certainly try.
I would like to make an amendment to the motion to include first-
It can't get amended until it's seconded.
Oh, I'll second it, so I can amend it.
I assumed that, city clerk.
I wasn't sure how it worked. If I could amend it, then the second, but I'd like to amend it to include first responders, police, and fire, because there are hometown heroes, too, as well, and those can be up for, you know, 9/11, you know, all sorts of different holidays. They could be, you know, displayed at the fire stations to give them a sense of pride and stuff, so, I mean, just make it all, to make it all-inclusive, you can bring back all the information, then we can decide on what we want to do. That's all.
Does that exclude teachers? Am I going down that route?
Just call it hometown heroes and come back with some recommendations and categories that we can talk about.
And other hometown heroes, first responders and-
Okay, we have amendment on the floor made by Commissioner Emmerich to add "and other hometown heroes" to the original motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there anything more to that? We can vote out the amendment? Vote on the amendment.
Excuse me.
And the amendment passes 5 to 0. Back to the original motion. Commissioner McDowell, do you want to restate it?
I think the clerk probably has it much better than I can, especially since it's been amended.
The original motion has amended.
Yeah, we just have to say "original motion."
Okay, "to direct city manager to bring back information and logistics on implementing a banner system program honoring our active-duty military and veterans and other hometown heroes."
Wow, you're good.
And that motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you for the conversation, folks.
Yeah, thank you for bringing it to us, Commissioner.
Thank you. Call you tomorrow.
Final public comment on the evening.
I have three.
Oh, boy.
Elaine Prince, "I'm opposed to ordinance number 2023-25 regarding the high-density development and industrial changes from agricultural in the wetland nature preserve adjacent to the Northport Estates community. I oppose this development to not only the effect it would have on my community and the estates, but the adverse effect it would have on the land, natural environment, including air quality, road conditions, traffic, and a poor plan build-out of industrial developments to turn Northport into undesirable city. The preserve is a preserve of a reason. When will the destruction of natural land- Rainfall in this area is high along the Mayakahatchee Creek. When the natural land is gone, replaced with cement and more buildings, you will be pulling your water source and creating a sick city instead of preserving the natural privilege the city can benefit from. High-density and industrial development should not take place in the area adjacent to our agricultural land and natural preserve." Maria Leslie, "The commission needs to be, needs to put the people of Northport first, and that starts by listening to what is being repeatedly stated. We do not want or need the ULDC change. The mayor doesn't even plan on notifying the residents who this monstrous change would impact, how considerate. The residents who care are the ones speaking up repeatedly. The residents who care pay attention. We are sick and tired of being ignored. The enormous ULDC restructuring is too big to change all at once, if at all. It severely undermines what the residents are telling you they want. It negatively impacts far too many of us. The people who are unfortunate enough to live on Price have enough to deal with as well. Listen to the people." Richard C., "Ordinance 2023-26, a city goal to increase industrial zoning by 2% for Toledo Blade 55 AC will not going to better balance the zoning disparity, nor will it stabilize the residential existing tax base. Growth by all sectors of zoning always demands yield service growth needs as well, so residential lot taxes will remain unaffected by industrial use increases. I've read that Northport needs a new central police station to replace the one by City Hall. There will be needs for fire and police protection, drainage, and road service, garbage, all the operating employees, buildings, vehicles, equipment, along with government services, etc. That will be needed and funded and funded. Warehousing at Toledo Blade 320 in not, in a location not consistent with the surrounding area uses will not stabilize or reduce taxes anywhere. Further, industrial warehousing zoning at the north end of Toledo Blade will be an island unto itself and not in character with the surrounding zoning and use. The property to the north is land preserve. The property to the east is the Orange Hammock Wildlife Management Area, and the neighborhood to the west is the large lot Northport Estates. Industrial is inconsistent with these properties." Thank you, Richard Kane. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. Moving on to commission communications, out of respect for the hour, I'm going to hold mine to the next meeting. Commissioner Emmerich, Commissioner McDowell.
Because I knew it was going to be a very late night, I already sent it to the city clerk in the backup material.
You are my hero. Commissioner Stokes.
Keep mine down to the next meeting.
Okay.
Vice Mayor White, yes, I will wait to the next meeting.
Okay, and how about my administrative and legal reporters? City clerk?
I have none.
Deputy city attorney? Our illustrious city manager?
Nothing else. Thank you all.
It is 11:55.
Midnight.
And it is my pleasure to adjourn the city commission regular meeting.
Same day it started.